the Tuesday, December 7, 2021 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just have a brief announcement about open podium process here with City Council. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the City Council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting. These meetings typically occur on the first and third Tuesday of each month. Open podium occurs from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter so we can be prepared, or better prepared, for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. We now have an HRA meeting that the City Council serves as the HRA board as well, so we have an HRA meeting within the City Council meeting. So I now call the HRA meeting to order, and we don't need to take attendance for that. So we do have a motion to approve the minutes of our last HRA meeting just held recently on October 26. Is there a motion to do so?
I move to approve the HRA minutes from October 26, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, Mr. Getcho, the first order of business.
Thank you, members of the HRA. The first order of business is the HRA budget of $200,000. That budget was preliminarily approved on September 7, as was the city budget. Later on tonight, the city budget needs approval as well for 2022, and the levy that's at $200,000 has been set at that amount for quite some time, and we feel comfortable with that number, which covers staffing related to our housing programs. So for you is a resolution to certify the levy and budget for 2022 for the HRA.
I'm not sure how far back it goes, but I'm pretty sure it's 20 years.
I think so.
Somewhere right around there. Council, any questions, any comments you wish to make, or if not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution certifying the 2022 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2022 HRA budget of...
Sorry about that. Oh, keep going, I didn't see the next page.
Budget of $200,000 as reviewed by the council.
Advantage of reading it off of a computer, which mine is not working at the moment. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, Mr. Getcho, the next item.
Yes, we are asking you to take action to decertify a tax increment financing district. The district was formed back in 2006, Superior Investment, Superior Eden Prairie Investment. So the life of that district is over. All obligations have been paid, and the TIF district can now be decertified, and all of the property value can be placed on the tax roll.
And TIF districts cannot be transferred. I mean, they're tied to an original project, original development agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Specific location, specific agreement.
Right.
Specific project, yes.
Great. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I will move to adopt a resolution approving the decertification of tax increment financing District Number 20 of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, Mr. Getcho, next.
Yes, the last item is asking you to amend TIF financing agreement for another TIF district. So this is a Trail Point Ridge TIF district. So they're actually, we're asking for an amendment here because there were no tax increments derived from this property in 2020, so there were no increments available to pay the developer in '21. The first increments will actually be in 2022, so that requires a new TIF agreement and a new TIF note. So we're asking tonight that you approve an amendment to this tax increment financing agreement.
Council, questions? Motion?
Move to adopt the resolution approving of First Amendment to the Tax Increment Agreement for Tax Increment Financing District 23, Trail Ridge Point, and authorizing issuance of a new TIF note.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, Mr. Getcho, we are back to our regular council meeting, and we have a donation.
We do. I will turn this over to Mr. Lothammer.
Your Honor, council members, I just want to double-check that Terry Pika or Cheryl have not... Here we go. I just want to say a few comments, and then I'll turn it over to her to tell you a little bit more about their group. But from my perspective, this is one of the best example of a grassroots organization coming together. And almost 25 years ago, this group of concerned citizens came together to really protect some land in the northern part of Eden Prairie and some really high-quality forested land. And not only did they help with that and have the acquisition come to fruition, but over the years, they've also cared for the property as well. They've inspired other groups like Boy Scouts and other volunteer organizations to not just raise funds, but to roll up their sleeves and really help with that. And so from my perspective, what they've done wasn't just to acquire, but to really enhance that over time. You might be familiar with some of the plant sales, where dollars from that have gone back into the property in trees and other plantings. We've really benefited from their work and appreciate it. And I really appreciate that they would come forward to us and let us know that they trust us to continue to care for it. They're looking to not have themselves as a legal entity going forward, and so they would like to take their remaining funds, donate it to the city. We've met on-site with both Terry and Cheryl and talked about what those funds would be used for. The resolution talks about the funds being used within the conservation area itself. There is more tree planting to be done, but we'd also like to develop an interpretive sign that talks about the history of that area, as well as the natural features of the area, too. And so I'd like to invite Cheryl up if you'd like, or we can move forward. Okay. Terry Pika is also someone that we've been working really closely with, and as you know, he lives close by and has been a longtime member of this group. And so I turn it back over to you, Mayor, for accepting the donation. It is approximately $14,000, and that would be put into an account to be used then going forward into the future for improvements at Birch Island Conservation Area.
So stays as a dedicated account in a line item that definitely stays separate?
That's correct, yes.
Great, excellent. That's very wonderful, and I've been part of that process for, I think, since the beginning, so it's been a pleasure. Council, any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion?
Move to...
It was in stereo.
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation from the friends of Birch Island Woods to be used for improvement within the Birch Island Woods Conservation Area.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right. Moving on then to the agenda, anybody have any questions about the agenda or additions to it that you'd like to add under Councilmember Reports? Not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Minutes, anyone have questions about either the workshop minutes held on November 16 or the regular council meeting? If not, is there a motion to approve both of them at the same time?
Move to approve the following City Council minutes. City Council Workshop held Tuesday, November 16, and the City Council Meeting also held Tuesday, November 16.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right. The consent calendar, we have a lot of items on there this time. I trust that you've read through them all. I often look for something that had something to do with the United Health Group that would recuse me, and I did not see that. I hope I didn't miss it. Does anybody have any other questions about any of the items A through R on the consent calendar? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve items A through R on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right. Moving to first meeting in a while that we've had this many public hearings, which I guess because that's what we do, it's kind of exciting, actually, but I hope all of you agree with that. So the first one is Olympic Hills Golf Club Storage Edition. Mr. Getcho, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, council members. So you may remember that Olympic Hills Golf Club was before you a while back to get approval for an exterior facade remodel for the building, which they're still moving forward with. Along the way, I think they realized that there's another, a bigger addition than they had originally contemplated. I think an additional 400 square feet of storage is needed, so they needed to revise their plan and come quickly back through for a site plan minor amendment to be able to add that additional space so they could have the storage. But as you can see from the packet and the material, you know, the vast, vast majority of their project is the same that was presented to you a few months back and that you approved. I'm not sure if someone's here from Olympic Hills, if you want to... Obviously, they're here to answer any questions the council may have, or add anything to the background that I gave.
Hello. Yes, graciously, you guys approved the facade and additions about two months ago. Charlie Peterson, architect with Olick Design Group. Storage is an interesting animal when you start talking to the people at the club. We determined that with a little bit of square footage that we had under that 2,000-square-foot limit for the minor site plan amendment, that additional 400 square feet, we added seven feet to the south side of that storage building. So it's not the street side, it's the golf course side, so we ended up stretching that seven feet, and that was largely the move we made to get them the extra storage that we determined was necessary.
Well, we just love to see reinvesting in the project here in Eden Prairie, so this is fairly perfunctory in my mind, but not to bias anyone in the audience who might speak to this. This is a public hearing, so any, council, any other questions of the proponent or staff? So you can sit down, and we'll call you back up if there are questions. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this issue before us tonight? If not, council, go ahead and, I think, close the public hearing and make the motion.
I'll move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for a site plan review on 82.31 acres.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a pretty easy public hearing, this one, so thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right. The next one's an interesting one, only in that we usually approve buildings going up. This is unique to approve a building coming down. So, Mr. Getcho.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. The applicant here, Shutterfly, is requesting to demolish an existing office building on Viking Drive. The property is located north of I-494 and south of Lake Smitana. It's zoned and guided for office use. The applicant is requesting a PUD waiver for impervious surface coverage, and Shutterfly is the current tenant on the site, which wishes to remain there, and they'd like to make some alterations to their site. And their applicant is here tonight to present you with an overview of their project. You have a public hearing, and then you would need to approve a PUD concept development, review and agreement.
Welcome.
All right, good evening. Well, yes, it's a little bit of an unusual project. I'm here, my name is Terry Helen. I represent RSP Architects and the design team that's helped. The Tempest Group, which is, Tempest Realty is actually the owner of the property, and Shutterfly is the ultimate tenant. This is formerly known as the Life Touch Campus here in Eden Prairie, and the project approach is about providing and retaining Shutterfly in the Eden Prairie community. And this is meant to consolidate that existing campus and the spaces that are on the campus. It's also working to solve some of the parking challenges with this campus, since it was originally built over 20 years ago, and we'll talk about some of those numbers. In the end, it's going to benefit, there's going to be more green space. We're actually improving the pervious amounts on the site by a little over an acre, and so there's some benefits to the neighboring community. The project itself is a consolidation. Many of the existing spaces in the building to be demolished are not used. Not all of them are not used, but over the past 20 years, office space and needs have changed for Life Touch, which is now Shutterfly. A lot of the studios are not used. Office space is used, but consolidation of office space has been a norm in the industry of the last 20 years. In addition, there's a cafeteria and some executive parking in that building. The connecting building will be modified and enhanced. There'll be a new canopy added and improved entry/arrival sequence to the property. And in addition, we're going to be extending the pedestrian connection and bike path along Viking Drive in conjunction with the city is one of the other enhancements. And then finally, also some parking lot improvements that bring the parking lot up to the current standards. The one PUD adjustment has to do, again, the previous project was approved, the pervious area requirement is 30%. The original property you'll see was approximately 63%. We're actually adding an acre of land and green space back to the property, which is a little over 8%. The site, here you can see the outline of the two buildings located just north of 494 and off of Viking Drive. These two buildings, the easternmost building, which is most central, which is central to the overall campus and property, and central to the parking, is the building that will be retained, along with the entry/connection piece, which will be modified and enhanced. You can see here the landscape plan with the green space will provide an amenity to the tenant Shutterfly and a patio off of that connection, what was the connection building. In addition, we're bringing up and adding more landscaping in the islands. That's one of the enhancements and parking improvements. Here you can see an image of the original entry. There's a fountain that's actually going to be removed, so it's a more direct connection, and the landscaping and improvements and canopy element that will be added in front of the existing structure. Here is current condition with that entry. The building on the right is the building to remain, and then this is a view looking at the facility once the modifications are made. From a street frontage standpoint, you'll have more of a clear view of that existing campus. The parking will not be modified in any substantive sense, except for the addition of green and along the Viking Drive with the landscaping that's being done. There are some islands that we're adding as well. Here you can see, again, it was originally the Life Touch Campus, a photo of what's currently there, and then the modifications with that canopy and trellis and patio area. The biggest challenge with the campus, and one of the reasons that this consolidation is occurring as well, is the parking ratio has been a challenge for the property. It was originally approved at about 2.8 per thousand, and this brings it above the zoning requirement and near industry norms, that 5 per thousand, just under 5 per thousand. The main improvements on the site, again, have to do with probably the parking islands and then the bike and pedestrian pathway that will connect from the Lake Smitana bikeway and pedestrian path. You'll see a connection at the far northwest corner of the site, and then runs all along Viking. We do have to do some modifications to the existing landscaping and birmingham and trees there, but, so there's some site walls and other things to make that walkway work. And then here you can see, again, additional trees that are added within the parking lots and some of the islands. And then finally, this is a plan of that existing entry/connection, and then the canopy element, and then elevational, the materials are very consistent and similar to the existing condition of the building. We do need to rebuild the facade on the western side where the building's being taken down, so. With that, I'll turn it over to staff to give their report.
Anything, Julie, or are we good?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't have anything to add at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think you're supposed to come up with something here. No, it's all good. This is, I don't know, I don't know if straightforward's the right word, but it feels very straightforward, just unique, again, to be taking down, in some ways, what many people probably think is a perfectly good building, but I think we do understand that it enhances the viability of the site, and the parking was problematic, or to be sold as two separate businesses that were inadequately parked. So I think we do fully understand that. Council, do you have any questions of the proponent or of staff?
No, I guess I'd just like to say thank you for a very thorough presentation that you sent to us. It seemed to answer most of my questions, as it was extensive and thorough. Thank you.
Agreed. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of comments first. One is that we are so happy that you're going to stay here 12 more years, so thank you. Appreciate that. You're 12 years lease there, right? Am I right?
Yeah, the Shutterfly team is, Karen Frye here represents Shutterfly, so...
So, thank you for that. We appreciate that. Also, the bike path and the greenery, because, you know, all the previous council members and mayors, that they're the big initiative to make sure that Eden Prairie connected and continue that tradition is very important for all of us, so appreciate that as well. Now the question. You are modifying the area. Are you planning to put any charging station on the...
Premises or...
Yeah, premises or the parking lot.
You mean for electric vehicles?
Yes.
There are no plans at present?
May I ask why?
Just what, it hasn't been included at this point. I think Shutterfly and Tempest, who are the ultimate owners, maybe can answer if there are any plans in the future. It hasn't been part of this project at this point.
Can we ask, is there any consideration in the future?
I'm sure we eventually will attempt as the landlord of something like that. I would say that...
Just to get, so that you get on, so that our people at home can hear, would you mind, thank you so much, come on up and maybe give your name and position with the company?
Sorry, wasn't expecting the call here. I would say not immediately when we open, but no doubt that some of our employees are going to say, hey, we need charging stations. So, yes, I would say, one way or another, there will be some, probably not the day we open, but we'll probably do something like that. We're already doing, we plan on doing carpooling, you know, special parking for carpooling and vans, things like that.
Yeah, that's, this has surprised me, because you're doing so, so good on the greenery, the path, the trees, but somehow just missed out the charging station.
It's a good point, though. Thank you for bringing up. It's a great...
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And you're going to have a really nice proximity to the new LRT station up to your north, I think, if I've got that right?
Yeah.
But that will be great for all the businesses in that area.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
So, council, why don't we have a public hearing and then close it if you have other questions, unless you want to ask something now of either the proponent or... Nope? Okay. We'll call you back up if we need something. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the Shutterfly proposal? Seeing none, council, why don't we go ahead and then close the public hearing, make the motion if we want to continue speaking to this weekend?
Sure, I will move to, or we can move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for a planned unit development concept review on 16.2 acres and approve the first reading of an ordinance for a planned unit development district review with waivers on 16.2 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council, what do you think? Any additional questions, or this is fairly straightforward. There was a lot in the packet. Thank you for your comments on that, Councilmember Nelson. Anything? Then let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We did get that seconded, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Sorry. All right, moving to our next public hearing, the LE. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The applicant, United Properties, is requesting approval to construct a 239-unit apartment building at Lincoln Lane. The property is located on the east side of Eden Prairie Road, about a quarter mile south of Highway 5. The property is just north of the historic Smith Douglas Moore House and the Applewood Point Development that United Properties is a part of. This is a 6.4-acre site, involves the redevelopment of seven current single-family homes and the removal of the street into the apartment project, which would be approximately 350,000 square feet, four-story building with one level of underground parking. The applicant is here tonight to present to you their project. The staff and the applicant can certainly answer any questions you may have or that arise at the public hearing.
Great. Welcome. Give your name and the position that you have.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Scott Peterson, representing developer, United Properties, at 651 Niklet Mall, Minneapolis, Minnesota. United Properties is a 100-year-old real estate development firm based here in Minneapolis and St. Paul. We develop a variety of sectors of real estate, everything from multifamily to senior housing to industrial to mixed use. We have a successful track record of execution and delivering products in Eden Prairie, most recently, the Applewood Point Project directly adjacent to this same site that we're talking about this evening, as well as the CH Robinson Corporate Headquarters. Our team is here tonight to give further presentation. We've enjoyed working with staff over the last few months, and frankly, we're excited about the project here in front of you tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to DLR, our design team. Thank you.
All right. I'm Matt Johnson, I'm the architect with DLR Group.
And with me? Nathan Kay, designer with DLR Group.
I want to give you a little tour of the alley, kind of get the stats kind of rolled out. But first thing I want to kind of talk to is the actually, why we named it the alley? I'll let Nathan talk to that.
Yeah, hopefully, as we go further into the design of the building, you can notice that everything we do is to tie it back to the context of Eden Prairie. So we saw an opportunity with even just the basic name and story of the building to tie it back by naming it the alley. And the alley is a riff or an homage to the author credited with naming Eden Prairie, Elizabeth Frye LA. So Elizabeth in LA, we did a little riff of that, and so now hopefully you can live at the alley.
There you go. Thank you. I'm going to jump to the site and come back to the context or to the kind of stats, but this is the site. It's on the east side of Eden Prairie Road, just north of 212, also just north of the Smith Coffee Shop. It's 6.4 acres, current home of seven single-family residential homes. Of the mix, 239 units and a nice broad section of unit types from 239 studios, 97 one-bedrooms, 36 one-bedrooms plus den, and 67 two-bedrooms. So it's a great place to have a broad kind of demographic of those who will live there, with singles to families all the way through. Size park for in four cars, 97 underground, the remainder above on surface. One of the big features of this project is this outdoor courtyard in the middle of the project, over an acre in size. It's our space where the residents can come together. There's a garden area, pool, play areas for kids, lawn grass, and really a nice open space that a lot of units can open on to provide just as nice view into the courtyard as it is out under the landscape around the neighborhood. The other big parts of this project is that we are able to align the intersection, the Lincoln Lane intersection with intersection across the street, and also put a turn lane in, a right turn lane off Eden Prairie Road into the site itself, to help create a more safe intersection. So the little features, we're able to preserve 16 significant trees. We've got pocket green roofs, we'll talk about in a little bit, EV parking stations, stone water recafter for watering of the actual garden beds within the courtyard, native plants throughout the site, and again, high density urban, kind of high density housing to really prevent this urban sprawl that we're seeing throughout our metro area. And most importantly, the project does include affordable units itself. View of the site itself, on the left, the right side, just to kind of blow up that actual turn lane, the right turn into the site itself. On the left side, you come in that intersection, if you go to the right and around, that's where the main office is, that's the amenity piece to the building. That's where the shared environments are within that corner area. Then the open big courtyard, which opens to the south, a lot more sunlight into that space itself, and again, provide those long-distance views out into the Jason Coffee Shop, into the south. The other big thing to talk about on this, since we were at the planning commission, we've added a screen fence, a four-foot screen fence, I'll show you an image in a little bit, along that east property line from the north end, where that retaining wall takes a dog leg left, down past that opening where the wall transitions to, from retaining earth from our site to retaining earth from falling into our site. So it's able to then provide that screening of the headlights themselves. The other perimeter is on the south, for example, the retaining wall there protects headlight glare, and on the north side, where the storage buildings are, that's where it's planted with native plants and small lower plants to help shield headlights. And then the outlot on the upper north, we're able to actually get both of our manholes on that outlot itself, so that allows a good connection and get tippy cross easement to, for the sanitary system. This is a view of that open court space. That is where, again, where the residents come together to form community. I know you can look onto it, but a place to recreate, a place for the kids to play safely on the site itself. It's also a great place, we're creating these native planting beds, or native guarding beds, kind of culinary garden idea for the community, so you can reserve your planting bed within, so you have an opportunity to grow your own vegetables for your own garden, for your own table at home. I'll let Nathan talk about the context of the site.
Yeah, images in front of you are just major buildings of Eden Prairie that we pull the material palette from. I'd be happy to bring them aboard closer to anybody if you want to actually touch and feel the materials, but you'll notice here, there is, you know, a lot of commonalities in all of these buildings. There is this, you know, masonry stone plinth, there is this neutral earth-tone kind of palette, and then there is an element of like a darker color to help break up the massing along the building. So snapshot of this in your mind, and then if we go to the next one, this is our proposed elevation. We have a lot of layers of breaking up the massing and different strategies, but you'll notice we have that, you know, masonry podium, kind of tie it back into the context of buildings of this scale, and then we have the fiber cement panels and three different of those earth-tone neutral beige colors to start to break down the massing. And then we pull in what's called an almost black. It's black when it's shady, when the sun hits it, it's got this brownish tone to it, but the use of the black is to, one, like in clothing, we use it to slim ourselves down, like Matt here is demonstrating. Nope, yeah. Leave that there. And then, no, I just lost my train of thought. Sorry. But, oh, but the other point was, we are also using the black because we are designing a home, right? And one of the characteristics of a home is be able to pull up to it and recognize where you are, so by further breaking down the building into bays, we've kind of brought it so that you can identify where you live more easily than this giant monolithic facade, and I'm in the 12th window over kind of thing. It's more of I'm in the, I'm in the third bay in the first block of the building. So that's our explanation for the palette. We do have some accents at the ground level. These materials have a little bit more of a character to them, both in over time aging and in tactfulness. So we'll have a Corten aged metal canopy and a screen at that front door, which is to the right, right side of your drawing. The screen is to kind of allude to our front screened porch. That's on the right, and then our signage is going to be a board formed concrete, which is a lot of character for concrete. And so those are the pedestrian scale.
So this, and maybe you can probably see it better from these rendered images, is the Corten screen at the front door. And again, this is, as you come into the site, if you go to the right, to the south, that is the main office, the main amenity entrance to the building itself. That's where we've got a little bit of a green roof above there. Also, this rendering is a good one to illustrate these pocket green roofs that we have, as a way, again, to include more pervious surface into the site itself. We chose to go this route for two reasons. One allows us to maintain more roof area for future PV array, the building will be PV-ready. But these green roofs then allow residents to actually look onto them from the corridor system itself. And so it's a way then for people to actually kind of learn how buildings work and how a green roof, what is that all about? And they can see this green roof grow and evolve over time as it established itself and the reasons behind a green roof in your project itself, which is pretty unique. And so this are just a little more detail on the green roof, an extensive green roof, so you can kind of see that section profile, the detail, what an extensive green roof actually is. And it deals with these tray system for, to maintain the stormwater for the grid structure to kind of grow into. That pink is the insulation board above the roof structure, so they're showing everything above that insulation plane up to the sedums above, in terms of what the landscape is. So it's an extensive roof system, little thinner, it's not as heavy, allows for the structural system itself to be not as robust, as expensive to do, yet get all the benefits of a green roof onto the project itself. And then on the little image in the lower right, you can see how those windows then from the corridor system look onto this green roof, so every resident gets to appreciate the green roofs on the property itself. And then the upper right is just a detail how this fence, guardrail, is four foot tall, how it works on the site itself. It's a dark color. It's really built our side of that retaining wall, so it serves a couple functions certainly, prevent people from falling off the wall, it provides screening of cars themselves and headlights, but also provides a decorative element along that east line with the trees behind it itself.
You know, while we're here, could you talk about the green roof in terms of artificial watering and in terms of maintenance and upkeep, responsibility for that, all that piece?
Yeah, what's great about this system is that once it's established, it takes very little maintenance. So annually, you got to just kind of take care of it, if you would, do a little bit of weeding of that, but other than that, it runs itself once established. There's no separate irrigation system for it. You can water it ahead of time just to get stuff established, but after that, it's designed just to live. That's what the sedom plant is all about. It's just a very drought tolerant plant. It likes hot areas, a roof, for example, and so it'll do quite well over time. It does take a little care at the beginning. It's the building's job to maintain that and make sure it does what it does. Somebody wants to look onto a brown dirt patch is what it'll be if the sedom doesn't grow.
How does maintenance get access to it?
So it'll be from the lift from down below. So there's no access from the building itself, so it's a secure area, you can't get onto it, nobody, it should maintain itself much easier that way, if people aren't walking out and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's the project. Would love to answer any questions you may have, or of us, or Scott?
So, yeah, you'll be right next to second. So, council, we can definitely ask questions of the proponent in this moment, let's do that. If you have issues, concerns, we could raise them later as well during some sort of, either after the public hearing, or now, it's up to you. But, so, if you have specific issues to occupy or to take advantage of these two, let's do that. Councilmember Nelson.
I know that you're having affordable properties in here, in fact, we require it. What percentage of affordable homes are in this particular property?
Yeah, I'll have Scott answer that, in terms of final numbers.
Councilmember, right now, we are in current talks with the HRA on this project, and right now, we are planning 20% affordable units at 50% AMI.
Now, do these, I assume these aren't all just studio, that there's also the one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, you know, in appropriate percentages to the rest of the building?
That is correct. So that 20% is split across the unit mix of the project.
So there are some that are suitable for singles and some that are suitable for families and such?
Yes, it is, and just to reiterate, that affordability, that 20% is split evenly, not evenly, excuse me, is paraded across the unit mix appropriately.
Excellent. Thank you.
Council?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for coming tonight. I have a question about the fence on the north side, near the Birchwood Labs. Are you planning to put some sort of fence up there? Because they were concerned about people, you know, going across their property to get to Dairy Queen.
Yeah, we'd originally put a fence on our original site plan on the north property line, and staff requested that we remove that as it's inside of an easement.
Okay, so could they plant trees or something?
Let's have Julie respond to that.
Mayor, members of the commission, in some of the initial plans that were submitted by the developer, they were showing a dog run on that area, and the outlot that is shown on the north side of that property, the outlot is being created in order to preserve an opportunity for potential future road connection out to Eden Prairie Road, and so as a part of that, staff requested that the dog run be removed. Of course, the dog run did include a fence, which was within the easement area as well to address Mr. Peterson's comment.
So could a fence be put back that would prevent people from cutting across the property to get up to the new Burger King, that's going to be there, right? Or the Dairy Queen, right?
Mayor, members of the council, staff can take a look at that a little bit further. Maybe the fence would be better located south of the outlot, rather than with, on the north side, within the easement area, but we can certainly take a look at that and follow up with the developer prior to coming back for a second reading.
That sounds good. Does that sound fine, councilmember, to me? Okay.
I also have a question about, I was reading in your sustainable features, number seven, explore opportunities to salvage, reuse as much of the existing homes as possible to avoid landfills. I mean, what, I'm just interested to know, what kind of things do you reuse or recycle from the homes that you're going to take down?
Yeah, there's, it's a great question. There's a variety of organizations that will come in and salvage some certain things. We've also had success in other projects with a group like Habitat Humanity that'll come in and look at cabinetry and those sort of things. So we obviously haven't explored that further, since we don't actually own the homes yet.
Okay.
Thanks. Yes, okay, council, I wasn't sure what you were saying, yes, too. Councilmember Fryeberg.
Thank you, Mayor. One question I have with Apple Point there and Common Balance Property. It's a county road, so we can't sit here and say, hey, there's stop signs, you know, there's going to be, you know, signal lights, the whole thing. You have that intersection, Lincoln and County Road 4, which, just a little, you know, it's not a very wide one. You have a very concerned homeowners association right across the street. It came up in the planning commission, I've heard it myself. There's a lot of pressure right there on County Road 4 as far as, as far as traffic. Help me feel better about that.
And just, so I understand, when you say County Road 4, is that Eden Prairie Road, at that intersection, Lincoln Lane, Eden Prairie Road? Yeah, so, yeah, okay, great. We have had discussions on this, obviously, in the history here with staff and the community. So the city requires its own traffic study, they go out, they commission their own traffic study, it's not a developer traffer study. The benefit we have here is that that infrastructure, that street, that stoplight, is oversized for the current use of Lincoln Lane with it only being seven residences. So right now, the traffic study supports that that intersection facilitates and operates at an acceptable level of service. When we go ahead and add the 239 units, the traffic study still reports that that intersection will operate at an acceptable level of service, and then that traffic report further goes on to say, barring the current trends of development, what may happen beyond our project when we open in 2024, all the way to 2030, that that intersection is still operating at an acceptable level of service. So what, what we've tried to do with our site plan is, we've committed to a turn lane, which will assist and help people get in and out of the site. We've also agreed to widen that intersection to align with the existing spot across it. And then another comment that we had mentioned was, you'll notice the parking on the west side of the site does not face across Eden Prairie Road and faces internally. So another way to try to help alleviate any type of traffic or car impact to that, that neighborhood.
One thing I'm going to disagree with you on that. I appreciate what you just said. What concerns me, schools in session now. All right, schools in session, you know, people are going back to work more and more all the time. Okay, I want to turn left going out onto 4, as far as County Road 4, Eden Prairie Road. Even right now, coming out of Smith, that's tough. That can be tough. Now, we're adding, you know, that much more pressure on it, and again, it's regulating, it's pretty much out of our control as we sit here right now. It is a concern. I mean, there's a lot about it, because that light will back up traffic all the way down. They come out of the homeowners association, let's just say they're going the other way. You got them going left, you got them going right, and you got it all backed up or ready for the school. That's a real problem. You know, maybe it's a county problem, the timing of that light, I don't know, but I can just sense a major issue coming up on that, if we don't sit there and talk about it.
So I'm clear, so you're saying, like, right now, I was just there yesterday, I'm sure you all drove in there too, and you just go out of Lincoln Lane, you take the left, the light turns and you go, but you're saying because now we've got potential 400 cars times 10 trips, so you have a lot of cars, so that light will be active more, turning, 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 and that has the potential to back the traffic up on Eden Prairie Road. Is that your thought?
Correct, Mayor, and the right term is potential. You know, that's, that's the right term, because that's, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Okay. Any comments or?
Again, I'm not a traffic engineer, I can only reflect the comments that are in the report, right? And I believe there was a comment inside that report, the city commission traffic report, was that the timing is acceptable and will continue to be acceptable for those durations. You know, I'd also like, as a developer, one of the reasons we liked the site was because it is a lighted intersection. I mean, that's safety for our residents coming in, and there's been some development, you know, that doesn't, that adds density, that doesn't necessarily have that type of dedicated access, so.
You know, just to point out, and so, thank you, Councilmember Fryeberg, for raising that, and it does raise the idea, if you remember, there's a site up on the north side of town by the Home Depot, to the east of it, that Menards has that big sign, okay. That's a potential someday maybe apartment site, and if... that's a potential someday, maybe apartment site. And if they were to enter and exit out onto Valley View, they would not have potentially a median cut. They might, if the county agrees, but as of now, they don't. And so, they'd have a right in, right out. And so, this is pretty golden to actually have a lighted intersection right where we are putting this apartment building. I'm just pointing out that around the whole city, we do face this. I'm not saying that it's going to be perfect when it's built, but it is a better situation than some other places. That's all I'm pointing out. But good point that you raised. Counsel, anything else before we open this up to the public? We'll call you back up if we have questions. Thank you so much for your presentation. Counsel, anything you wanna share before... Should we do the public hearing and then close it, and then we'll have our conversation? Is that fine? Okay. So this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this issue tonight, please come forward. Give your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, yes. My name is Donald Hanson, and I live at 7936 Timberlake Drive, which is the closest house to this thing. I live directly across the street, across the... And I've talked to you and Kathy and PG about aesthetics, about color schemes, and these kind of things in the past. And I went to the planning commission, and I gave a presentation before the planning commission about natural beauty. And I gave this in a city council meeting in 2018. And I met with somebody that said he was an architect for this project after the planning commission meeting, okay? And so, I understood that they were going to consider making this a natural beauty project. And I don't know, maybe Julie could send them the presentations I handed out at the planning commission. And so, what my concern is, is that I love Eden Prairie, okay? And Eden, if you look at the word Eden, you know, it means natural beauty, a place of, you know, exuberant natural beauty. The prairie, obviously, if you look at the logo, you've got a nice yellow color and everything like this. I specifically asked the architect that made up the color scheme, which they... I don't see that they've changed, not to have black on it, because black is not a natural color. The way that colors are typically chosen, as I said in my presentation in 2018, is that the colors of the building are made complementary colors to the sky. So that you have the sky, and then you have a complementary color, or more complementary colors, which some people call earth tones. And this makes a beautiful look between the sky and the earth tones. And I think I talked to the three of you at great, great length about this. So I'm very concerned that my thoughts were not taken into account. The complementary color of black, which they're so happy with, is black. You know, yellow, like the prairie, that's a blue color, a complementary color to blue. Brown, which is the... I don't know if you've seen Chaska Brick. There's a... They used to make Chaska Brick, but that's the earth color of Eden Prairie. And that's a complementary color to the sky. So these are earth tones, yellows and light browns and this kind of thing. And as I said, I gave this presentation, and I hope that she can send you the presentation, and also the presentation that I gave before the planning commission. So I would like to say that, in general, and I'm not criticizing, but in a way, I guess I am, but I love Eden Prairie. I love the color schemes of the natural prairie, the, you know, the earth tones. And if you look, if you go walking anywhere in Eden Prairie, the earth tones are a light brown color. So a building like this, it's got white and black on it, and specifically, natural beauty buildings, which I could give a presentation in 2018 about, those are no-no's, big no-no's. And the colors that are needed on a building like this are complementary colors to the sky. And just to finish up with, I'll say that in my presentation in 2018, you know, I made a presentation about Applewood Point. And Applewood Point knocked it out of the ballpark. Their building is beautiful. They met the requirements that I thought should have in there. And I'll just say that my neighborhood, my building, the nursing home there, I forget the name of it, that's right next...
E U, I'm sure.
Yeah, those are all earth toned buildings. Black and white, like this has on it, is simply not an Eden Prairie color. It's not an Eden Prairie building. It does not fit in my neighborhood.
Appreciate you coming in. Got to say, on this one, I'm leaning your way. Thank you. Okay, other residents? Anyone that would like to address... Actually, I guess you don't have to be a resident. Anyone that would like to address the council this evening?
I'm a resident.
Name and...
My name is Scott Malmston.
And address for a little while.
Sure, yeah. My name is Scott Malmston. I live at 16309 Lincoln Lane. And I'm one of the seven residents that is where the new building is gonna go in. And I've got a couple of other people that dared get through the snow here, so if we could stand up, just to kind of represent... It's a pretty decent crowd, I think, for the seven. So the building just kitty corner from us, the Applewood, we think is a very good project. And that's actually what stemmed our interest in initially going with United Properties, because we always thought that that would be a good addition to have something of the 239 that looks like that. They did a very nice job. And I think they will continue to do that when they build. And I know that there's some little... There's issues that they've got to work through, and I think they're gonna do quite well. And if you noticed, there is an electric vehicle charging station that's on page three on their thing. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Scott. Others, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mark Thieroff, and I represent Birchwood Labs, so the owner of the properties to the north. In the east, I hope you can hear me. I will be very brief. I wanted to speak with you just for a second about this fence issue. I don't know if it'd be possible to put up the site plan quickly, but if it were, there was a comment about the feasibility of a fence that I wanted to draw your attention to.
We have a packet, if you want us to look to a certain... Or is there a way to get it to this?
Or not. It's...
If it's on the PowerPoint, if you could pull it back up.
It was part of the PowerPoint.
I have it on the screen, so I don't think you can go back to that.
Well, in any event. When we were in front of the planning commission, we raised these same issues about the potential incompatibilities of these two uses. And to the credit, United Properties added the screening fence on the east side at our request. But if you notice, it turns the corner at the north side and then stops. So I was a little surprised to hear that they couldn't have a fence on the north side because of this dog park issue when they've already got a fence on the north side. They just have a short fence, and we need a long fence going across that total north line. Other than that, I would just point out, this is, of course, a PUD. PUDs are typically a give and take. The developer's asking for some flexibility. Here, asking actually for some very substantial waivers in terms of density, height, parking, and so forth. And we would strongly encourage the council to use its authority and discretion, either through conditions of approval or the development agreement, to require that this fencing go across the north boundary as well.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for your time.
Julie, while the topic is hot, can you just speak to the viability, feasibility of the possibility of that fence extending, and why did it... Robert, or why did it stop a certain point, et cetera? Go ahead.
Yeah, in case, I'll try to answer that question. So, right now, with the site plan that you're looking at, there's this outlot that's on the north side of that. That is an outlot that the city will ultimately take possession of. As we see, there might be a need for some roadway connections in the future, as we see more density. So we don't want that fence on city property. It just creates a whole host of issues. That means if they leave it on their property, they've got to keep it within that outlot on the opposite side of the outlot. We also have a 10-foot drainage and utility easement. We don't like to see any structures in our drainage and utility easements, because there's cable, there's electric, there's drainage, there's just... We're gonna have a sewer line that also runs through this area as well. So we like to keep our easements free and clear of any obstruction, so this fence would be an obstruction. And our policy, citywide, is to try to keep those out of those drainage and utility easements. So they would have to move it 10 feet south of their property line, and that's where their parking lots start. So it would take some finagling or relooking at, you know, could you fit a parking and a fence in there? I don't know the question or the answer to that question. It's probably pretty tight, and I suspect that's why they're not showing that fence on the north boundaries right there.
Just to be clear here, and I can't visualize it, so I don't know if you go three feet off the curb of the northern parking lot, that you run into something you shouldn't. But could the fence not be... Is there snow removal issue, or could the fence not be two to three feet right off that curb of the parking lot?
Their curb goes right up to the easement. It's literally at the easement line. And we're trying to keep the fence...
And if we went two to three feet into our easement, are we potentially... I mean, no one puts, you know, electrical, whatever, gas right next to a lot line. I mean, usually there's a distance of a easement there. There's no way to make that work.
Well, you could put it in there, but someday, somebody's gonna have to remove and relocate that fencing. And then it becomes the issue of who's responsible, who's gonna pay for that, who's gonna reinstall it. And that's why we try not to put any obstructions within our easements.
When it... When it's your... I know you can't predict the future, but right now, there's an owner of that northern piece of land there. And of course, anything can come up for redevelopment someday, but we're not looking at that in the next 10 years, 15, whatever. And at that point, a fence needs to be replaced anyway. So I'm just wondering, is that not possible for us to consider that as a compromise? And if we needed it removed, you know, what...
Yeah. I would prefer that the developer tried to figure out how they put it on their property outside of the easement. And if they've exhausted all options and there's no alternative, then maybe looking at putting it in the easement. But I'd prefer to eliminate the conflict and not have to deal with it in the future, if possible. And I think that they have a little bit of room on their parking curb and gutter, where they could maybe move that down a couple of feet. That buys to the south. They could adjust that and perhaps put a fence in there. I think there might be an alternative outside of putting it in the easement.
And if it was a compromise where they found a foot and we found a foot, I mean, is there a compromise in that? Or if we direct tonight that we really would like a fence on that northern border, and we send staff back to make this, you know, work at this happening, could we direct that we would like to have staff have some sense of a compromise to make this work? I understand completely what you said, and you're... Thank you. You're looking out for the best interests of the city, so we thank you there. And if we're trying to figure out how to make this go without it inhibiting the viability of the project as well, it just seems like, at that point, can we... We'll send it off to you all for a second reading to figure out if we can make that go?
Yes, we would work with the development team.
Expense, obviously, would be on the proponent for the fence itself. And then we'll, you know, figure out if we can... I'm not saying... I'm not putting words out there, just that we see if we could make that work. Okay. We're still in the public hearing. Thank you for obliging us there. Is there anyone else? Yes, please. Name and address.
Hi, my name's Anne Bernie Ranno, and I live at 1715 Cedar Crest Lane. And I'm speaking as someone who drives Eden Prairie Road all the time. There are 10 stoplights between my house and the community center. And I heard them say that maybe we'd have to have more frequent changes at the light there. And that's... I mean, it's really a tough commute up and down Eden Prairie Road, as it is right now. And if you have more traffic coming out, it's... You're creating a pocket of high-density housing here. And it really doesn't seem like the roadway is conducive to that. So, that's all.
Thank you. Others? Going once. Twice, all right. Counsel, why don't we... Let's see, why don't we just close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
So a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. I think each of us probably have not only questions, but comments to make. Do we want any questions to get out of the way first? If you just have something that's pressing that would help you in your statement or comments, why don't we get some questions out on the table? And it can be of the proponent or of staff. So Councilmember Freiberg.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to just talk about, I'm looking at one of the biggest caliber inches of trees that have to be removed. I'm aware of that property. I walked it. 795 caliber inches. That's a lot, you know? And I know much of it's necessary on it. One thing I'm not a total fan of is cash in lieu of, almost $100,000, what, $99,375 in lieu of doing anything with it. Am I interpreting that correctly? Okay. Not a fan of that, okay. Though I do understand why that caliber inches is... I like to see something a little bit different. Maybe there's a middle, more of a middle ground rather than just ignoring it, because there's some tree, you know, some trees, as you go into Lincoln Drive on the right-hand side, the second, it's the second property, as you go into Lincoln Drive, there's four beautiful, large, as far as pine trees. And they're probably one of the finest examples of them that I've seen. Many times, they look very ratty. I mean, not these four. I mean, these are some pretty darn good-looking pine. I know many, many times, we can't save them. But consideration, if it could be, you know, it'd be great. I mean, because we're losing those at way too fast a pace. And we are replacing much, but, you know, significantly different as far as size. And I just want to state, though, I'm just really not a fan of cash in lieu of, as far as when it comes to caliber inches. I believe people appreciate their green space, and I'd like to see if there's some kind of a compromise that could be made on that. Thank you.
All right, is that a statement or a question? I think it was a statement, which is fine.
But it ended up with... Okay, it was a statement that I'm not a fan of. It could be...
Nope.
I'd like to see if there's any type of something that compromise between the city and the developers on that, that...
Want to ask our staff to comment on that, or you're just throwing it out there as a statement?
No, we could certainly do that.
Which one?
And...
Whatever you want.
Maybe as far as, if I could just ask you, Julie, as far as, is there anything that you could find any kind of a middle ground on that, where replacement for part of that as opposed to just flat-out cash?
Julie and Robert, maybe speak to this site and to putting this project onto the site and what that might mean with all the grading and things like that. Go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, I'll leave the grading conversation to Robert. He's better versed to speak to that. With regard to the trees, as you can see from the site plan, the proposed building and parking area encompasses the majority of the site. So saving trees becomes very challenging on this site. If you take a look at the PUD waivers that they are requesting, they are requesting a waiver to the landscaping requirements as well. And as you know, the landscaping requirements are based on the size and scale, the massing of the building. The tree replacement requirements are in response to the number of trees that are removed from the site. City code does allow the opportunity for tree replacement to be met through cash in lieu. That's a change that the council enacted, I'm going to guess, maybe three or four years ago. We talked as a part of that, we talked as a staff with the council about that some of the infill sites just don't have the room in order to accommodate the landscaping and the tree replacement. Or in the alternative, some of these infill development sites have become overgrown, if you will, with trees. And there's just so many trees on there that it would not be feasible to replace those on-site, which is why the city council put in place the option for payment in lieu as a part of that. So as you see in your staff report, they are proposing to meet the tree replacement through payment in lieu and the landscaping. Because of the development that is proposed, they're asking for a waiver in order to meet the requirements for the landscaping as well. There's additional detail in that paragraph about the landscaping, talking about how many of those caliber inches are based on code calculations. They can only count a certain number of the shrubs, things of that sort. Those are imposed by the city's requirements. But if you look at the total number of caliber inches provided on-site, it would exceed the required amount by city code.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, let's see, let's keep maybe going, just keeping it to questions here still, and then we'll maybe go up and down the line and give some comments and statements. here still, and then we'll maybe go up and down the line and give some comments and statements. But Councilmember Nelson, any additional questions?
Oh, no, thanks for the clarification, though, on the trees. I am glad to hear that they are having a certain amount of landscaping and things that will make it a nice place for people to live there. I must say, I do like their proposed pool and bocce ball and play areas and other things for people to do in the center of that building. I think it would have proved nice to have that kind of amenities during COVID for a lot of families with children, giving them something, or for the adults to do too, outside that they could do. And I think this fits well with the more post-COVID-type situation that does allow for people to get out even when they're living in apartment buildings.
Right.
The only question I have is, is there really enough space between the Smith House, Smith Douglas Moore House, and the edge of this?
Julie.
Mr. Chair, or Mr. Mayor, sorry, members of the council, the plan as proposed does meet the setback requirements for the RM 2.5 zoning district.
All right, thank you. That was the one question I really had. I don't want it to be sort of edged into another property. If it's not, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Julie, question I have. If we tonight were to discuss the feelings that we have, and I realize I'm putting that definitely out there, admitting that in putting in quotes, on the color, on the composition, if we were to push back a little bit on this design, what kind of flexibility are we, do we have at this point in this process, believing that we like this project, we'll likely give some kind of approval tonight. But if we were to push a little bit to, to make it be maybe more applewood, to make it be some, did I say that right, applewood point, or to make it be a little, a little bit more fitting into what we think of as Eden Prairie, do we have the flexibility to do that between now and second reading?
Mayor, members of the council, so if there are specific recommendations or thoughts that the council has with regard to color or building materials, certainly staff can work with the developer on that between first and second reading. The building materials that are proposed do comply with the building material requirements of the 75% Class 1, 25% Class 2 on this building. So just wanted to provide that context for you. But if there are specific comments, we can certainly carry those forward and work with them.
I guess my question would be, the five of us are not necessarily design experts, but we do represent the people of Eden Prairie for what we believe is a positive addition to the buildings across the city. And typically, apartment buildings come to us, and, you know, they're, they're interesting, they're unique. I don't think we've done a lot of in the past. I'm thinking back to Elevate, and I'm thinking back to Martin Blue. We take the buildings pretty much as they, as they come. But, but this one, for me personally, is striking at, it's very plain, and it's very white. And not, not just Dr. Hanson notwithstanding, it's not just the color white, but it's, it's the massive white panels with the fake gable parapet, you know, it's, I just have issues with that. So I don't, I don't know how much we're wanting to, able to, how much agreement others might agree. I don't know, that's fine. But at this point, I'm not asking for a complete redesign, but something fairly remarkably different. And again, that's more what I guess I'm asking you. Are we at a stage where we still could be involved in, in flexible enough that we could get some changes, and we would lean heavily on staff to maybe individually pick our, I don't know how we'd do that in between. I guess we could also come back at the first meeting in January and have a workshop, because that's before second reading, if that helped you. I'm not sure how that would work out. But I'm really asking process here, I think, mostly.
Mayor, members of the council, certainly staff has worked with developers on similar types of requests in, in the past with regard to, you know, it might have been building material color, it might have been redesign of some parking or some landscaping that needs to be tweaked between first and second reading. So I would anticipate that's something staff can handle independently with the developer and come back to you as a part of second reading with some revisions.
When we get to comments and statements, then I'll make some additional, and I'll look for, you know, you all feel free to disagree or agree, but then we can all add in. Okay, so we're back to questions. Councilmember Norion, any questions you have that have not already been asked or answered?
Well, if I didn't ask you about the charging station, somebody, my colleague's probably going to laugh at me, so I'm going to ask that. Have you considered that? And if you're considered, and if you said no, why?
Well, they already said they're having.
Okay, that's good.
12, they're gonna have 12.
That's the answer.
They're gonna have 12 charging stations.
Oh, thank you.
Isn't that exciting?
No, do you want to ask anything else about that, or do you, are you pleased with?
I'm very pleased.
Those, or, yeah. It was nice. It is nice that our direction of this, and thanks to you over the months of always asking that question, I think now projects actually bring these charging station ideas in. So, so thank you. Appreciate you doing that. Anything else? Councilmember Norian?
No, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Toomey.
I just have one question. When was the traffic study done? Was that pre-pandemic or during? Because, you know, traffic has been down. Most, a lot of people are working from home.
Mr. Ellis.
Mayor Case, Councilmember Toomey, I could answer that question. So the city did commission this traffic report. We did use pre-pandemic traffic volumes, and we inflated them, looking all the way out to 2030, I believe. We looked at opening day, 2024, and 2030. Now, our analysis did indicate that the level of service of the Lincoln Lane Eden Prairie Road intersection today operates at level of service A. We're seeing six seconds of average vehicle delay in the AM peak, four seconds of average intersection delay in the PM peak. And that's with an opening day. It also stays at level of service A. And then looking at 2030 conditions, the AM peak reduces to a level of service B, which is still very high, and only 11 seconds of average delay per vehicle during the PM peak, it stays at a level of service A. So the intersection itself does operate at a very good level of service. Eden Prairie Road and Highway 5 does not today. It's in very poor condition, failing at times of the day, and it gets only worse. The city is undertaking an analysis that we'll be presenting in 2022 to the city council to get some input. What are some alternatives to resolving that traffic issue? Because that is what is restricting and causing spillback problems in all of these other intersections. And until that problem is solved, there's really just going to continue to be pressure on that intersection as more development continues west of us and people are driving through that intersection. So the city is going to work with Mindott and Hennepin County to address that Highway 4 and 5 intersection. Does it need to be grade separated? Does there need to be a connection through this triangle area, which is why we are trying to acquire this outlot with this development, to provide alternative means of ingress and egress for all of these properties within that triangle area? So we recognize 4 and 5 is the big problem that does need to be resolved.
Thank you.
Okay, so why don't we start back with Councilmember Freiberg and share our thoughts, comments, positive likes, concerns? Just keep in mind that we can share our personal concerns as we should. When we actually direct staff, we need to make sure we have a consensus. So it, you know, individual concerns are important, but we, the staff needs to very clearly be able to hear that there's a majority of us that feel one way or the other. So Councilmember Freiberg, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. Ellis, as far as that explanation on that, because I'll tell you that, that answers a little bit of what I'm, was talking about. And I appreciate that. That's all I wanted to say at this time, you know, on it. So, looks like something like that could work its way out.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson.
I have to agree with you. I'm not just crazy about the color. I do like the fact that it's light towards the top of the building and such. But white and black comes out with a very, very modern look when it's next to, I'd rather have it look more like the Smith Douglas Moore House and left, less like the building to the north, which has, doesn't it have the sites where you can do storage? And this doesn't look like that, but it's on the more modern end. And I guess with maybe a little bit of color change, it might be perfect.
Okay, that's it? All right. Okay, I have a list of a few things here. I'll start with some positives. Thank you for working to honor Eden Prairie history by choosing the name The Ellie. And it, as you mentioned, it honors Elizabeth Frye's Loomis Ellet. And, and it would be great maybe even to have, I'm sure you've already thought about this, but like in your lobby, a plaque, you know, explaining that and teaching about Eden Prairie history. I think that's, that's great. Regarding the exterior look of the building, I, I do agree with Councilmember Nelson that it just feels stark to me, and it doesn't, I'm just really trying to be careful here not to think that it's, you know, Ron Case's opinion, because we all have a different opinion on what, what might look good and what might not look good. I completely get that. I, I'm from the East Coast. I love the, you know, the old Boston, you know, brick look and the brown stones. I mean, I just, there's a certain look that I, I feel comfortable with. So I get it that this has a more modern, modernistic approach. I, I just feel like there, I think Apple Point came out really nice. I, I feel really great about Elevate. I just think there are some apartment buildings, even the Presbyterian Homes, the brick color's interesting, but I like the variation, the vertical, the, I like things going on. It feels good. I don't mind, you know, obviously distinction or differences between buildings. But when I look at this, it just felt very commercial, very stark. And, and I think it is the massive white panels that just doesn't do it for me. And then the fake parapet, off-center gable that in, in our literature said was trying to match the gabled look of the homes and the places around there. Well, to me, Apple Point does that. It's got the gables. It matches the, you know, townhomes across the street. This is a, again, a modernistic kind of abstract art kind of look to it. And I, it just feels cold. It just doesn't, I, I, so, I mean, I don't know how to exactly tweak it to make it work, and I don't want to send everybody back to the drawing boards. I just think I've got a problem with all the white. I know that you try to run those dark black or dark brown, something verticals down. It just feels cold. I do like the varied decks. I mean, so many of our apartment buildings in Eden Prairie have deck, 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 you know, and, and that's just an apartment building kind of look. And I like that about this. I, and I don't, I don't know if commercial or industrial feel is the right word either, but I would like to work at getting rid of that look. I do think the brown or the black is awfully dark. And to have so much of it be that, I think is maybe what some of us were reacting to as well. And I don't know, again, how you vary that or the materials. And again, I know it got pretty far down in the process here. I know staff has been involved. I know they've been, you know, echoing what we gave some, we had a workshop, what, a couple of years ago now, where we actually laid out like perceptions of what we were looking for. And I know we had color palettes and, and different types of brick and material. And so if this is the result of what we directed, I apologize, but I don't, I don't think this is what the outcome was that I was thinking when, whenever I was part of that workshop at the time. So again, so much of it probably could stay the same, but if we just vary, the massive white panel, gonna, gonna agree with Dr. Hanson on this one. I think the massive, the contrast of the white and the black, I think, is, is stark. So if I throw that out there in a moment, you all can shoot it down, or if we get three or four of us that say, yeah, let's just try to do something with it, then we'll send that back to staff. I, I think we can approve it tonight and send it back, trusting that the process with staff. If you want us to be back involved in the process, like at the first January meeting, and at least look at what came up with staff, and I think we could be involved with that. Do you want to comment, Mr. Gettr?
Well, Mayor, I think of all the, of all the different questions you've asked, I don't think the developer...
Sorry.
No, no, you, you guys have asked a lot of questions, but I think the developer may have a response to the, the color question, because I don't, if you're, if you're okay with, if you have a...
Absolutely.
Response to that, because I don't think they've weighed in.
Thank you. Please, thank you.
No, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Just to address a couple of questions. So one thing I do want to mention in regards to the tree count, you know, we are looking at an over one-acre green space, and I think that's, that's, that's significant in every aspect of the world. I mean, an acre is a pretty significant piece of property, and I don't think you'll see that across many developments. One thing we're also doing is we're committed to planting 11 trees off-site on additional property line for Applewood Point. Those calipers are not included in this calculation, so it's just another calculation that's just not represented in here. When it comes to the color, I, I don't know if you guys can see, hopefully you can see this material board here.
Can you lift him up?
I'm going to do this better. This will answer five questions. So I, I want to reiterate, we've spent a lot of time on this design. We've, we've met with Don, Mr. Hanson. We reviewed his proposal from 2018. We reviewed his proposal from 2019. We did a site walk. We met at Smith Coffee House. I get this is opinion-based. I truly think we've developed what we think is natural beauty in our eyes. And I know we're probably not going to always agree with everyone when it comes to opinions. But I do think, you know, we agree, I'll move this here, you know, we agree, first of all, and I don't want to get caught in semantics, we do not have white. There is no white anywhere on the project. And maybe this is a better representation, and I'll have Nathan speak about it secondly, here in a second. But we also think these, these are, these are natural tones. This is the tone of the earth. I mean, it, it does have brown. It does have prairie grass. It does have, you know, grays, like a shoreline with mud on a, on a riverfront. So those, those are kind of some of the things that led us there. So I, I just, I think it's important to understand what got us here and where we were at. You know, when it comes to the parapet roof, you know, our theory there was, you know, a gabled roof economically does, is hard to do on a project with affordable units at this scale. We did the nod to the parapet as a way to kind of blend a straight, flat parapet, white PTO roofing that everyone can see. We did that nod to, to go to the neighborhood. So that, that was something that we thought was a benefit. I understand not everyone may, may, may agree with that equally here. But we, we do think this is a very neutral tone palette. We also think if you go back and look at the elevation, if you may, you know, we don't, again, we don't have white. And if you look, you know, we do think this blends into that sky. Now, that's a blue sky. On a cloudy day, this would blend and disappear right into the sky, which I know is something Mr. Hanson has mentioned as well. So...
You're saying that cream-looking piece to the right is what we're seeing as white?
Yeah. I mean, so that rendering is a direct, like sunlight on the facade, right? That's the brightest.
And what is that next grayish, then? Where is that on this building?
Just to the right of it. So if you go back, the one, the volume on the left is this guy. And the volume on the right on the corner is this guy.
So where's the dark black-brown then on that?
So that's, this is a terrible representation of it. It's outside in the sun. It's, it's by, it's a hardy panel and it's a stock.
And where is it on that picture then?
So on that picture, it is those bands.
The verticals.
Yep. And then wraps the corner. It's that, like, dark black, but it's brown.
So I'm still lost where that gray is then?
Yeah, if, if I may, can we go to the elevation page? Check, keep, keep going, because I think that'll provide a better, right there. Yes, I think that's probably a better representation of where the colors are.
Okay.
Yeah, this is without, like, sunlight and stuff like that. So it's just pure...
So I still say that massive, whatever, white cream looks like an industrial building. I, again, you can say it's an opinion, and if others, if you don't agree, or I'm fine with that. And I, and I can be in a minority here, and I'll, I'll go away. But I, I just feel like that's very much of a commercial, industrial building, not a warm, again, like applewood. It's just, it just doesn't remind me of that.
It looks like in the middle, there's a different lighter color that's not shown on that panel. You see that?
Well, so one thing to notice, this is a computer elevation, right? You can give it like a gray, and it comes out with a gray. So these are the actual colors, right?
Got it.
And so I guess between the rendering and this, you can see others.
So there's only two colors of fiber cement then that you're using?
Yeah, I think we were getting rid of that middle white.
That looks white, yeah.
So there is no white.
Even that was like, you know, cream.
I mean, I guess I'm, and again, I, I'm very cognizant of not micromanaging at this point. I understand that. We've come to a point in the process. But nonetheless, at the conclusion of approving this tonight, this council will live with this decision as residents drive up and down the road and say, what were you... drive up and down the road and say, what were you, if they like it, great. And if they don't, what were you thinking? And I want to make sure that we get a product that the people of Eden Prairie will appreciate. And if you tell me 95% of people love this, Ron, it's you, I'll sit back. But if you tell me that this is something just too different for Eden Prairie, or too modern, or too modernistic, or too industrial, too commercial, then I'd love to send that back to staff and say, what can we do with this to alter minorly, but nonetheless, make it more pleasing. And again, it's subjective. I understand that. Lisa?
Well, and it's such a large building. I mean, it's gonna, a large project that, you're right, we're gonna have to live with this for a very long time. And I agree with Councilmember Nelson, I believe, that said, that she would like to see it more like the Smith Douglas Moore House. Like just, I think a little bit more character is what I'm looking at. And.
Maybe that's it. Yeah. And again, I can live with the colors. I mean, color is subjective. And again, when you put the colors up along the bottom there on our screen or else there, I get it. It works. I love the lead stone. And I'm assuming that the lead stone is all the textured color grayish that I'm looking. Okay. And that's a lot of it. I don't know if there could be other stonework going up some of the verticals or something just different. The parapet at the top is, you know, I think making it be the stark, large, industrial building. But, and if you all are okay with it, I will sit back.
It doesn't bother me quite as much as it does you. And I don't want it to look old fashioned, but I think it would be nice if they blended just a little bit more together. And you're right, that some of the other buildings that have been built by you near there, maybe if you could take a look at a few of the, you know, types of stuff that you used there and consider whether it would be appropriate for this or not.
How about, how about if staff, just trying to get to a way through this here, just so we can send it on its way. Julie, just give me feedback here. But how about if you sit down and you hear, everyone's heard this conversation. Don't take just my opinion if others, you know, speak somewhat in agreement. But what if you were to bring back two or three different possibilities of some things that could be done within the context of the approved project? And cost is a factor. I get that. And just the first workshop in January, just show us some ideas that came up. And before second reading, which would be, I'm assuming the second meeting in January, first meeting in February. And then work closely with all of you, just with some ideas and thoughts. And maybe the parapet roof stays exactly the same. You just change that big massive cream, I guess not white, look to it. Or maybe the starkness of the gray and the cream. I don't know. It surprised me on some level, but I just think if you brought back some possibilities and we were to look at that as a council and go at a workshop where we could talk freely and, not that we can't talk freely here, but throw some ideas out. Counsel, what do you think about that? Are you okay with that? And this might be one of the ideas that comes back. And maybe all of you go, no, we like the original. That's fine, too. I'm not suggesting it's an automatic changer. Lisa, Mark, are you okay?
I just had a clarification. Now, we're talking just color or are we talking a redesign?
Well.
That's two different things totally.
That's a good point. I'm talking just color for now, but if there's possibilities to reach, have some options on that parapet roof, or just throw around some possibilities, that would be great. And I'm assuming you all would be part of that, bringing some possibility. And again, this is one of the, keep this one as an option and just show us a couple other possibilities that might break up the massiveness of that one cream color. Councilmember Ryan, you, I thought.
I was just listening to all of you. This is a great conversation, but I just want to say that I do agree. For me is the left side and the right side, okay. And again, I'm not a aesthetic person, but when I look at the middle, like Mayor was saying, other people were saying, it's just too much off-white or cream. Look like white, right? It just needs something more accent, something to make it more wow. And it's not a wow building. It's just, just a building.
So staff can take that away then?
Right. Right. That's exactly so. But I do.
Mark?
I was just gonna say.
I'll come back. I'm sorry. I cut you off. That's right.
I was, I was just gonna say that it doesn't bother me the same way as far as that you're putting across. I guess, I guess I'm, I do understand we're gonna look at it for a long time, but I'm, I'm blocking out the white part. I understand that that white is gone at the top. So if you block that out, you know, I wouldn't have a lot of problems as far as, you know, another color selection. But if it comes into redesigning or something, I mean, I would, I would not see merit in that. I would see, you know, you know, it's only so many hoops you want to jump through that makes some sense. Just my opinion.
Sure. That's fair. PG, you were.
Yeah. I'm just gonna say, I mean, I think Councilmember Nelson mentioned a couple of really great things about this project as well. Love the idea about affordable housing. The roof idea, I think it's, it's great. I don't think I have seen in the last two, three years being in the council, somebody proposed that.
The green roof?
The green roof idea. I think it's awesome idea. You know, genius. Great, great. Charging station, something I missed. I'm glad you all thought through that, you know? Great. And also, Councilmember Nelson was saying that the middle of the pool and the work area and the game area and all that, it's just perfect for Eden Prairie. So a lot of good things here. So I don't want you guys, oh my God, I got beat up. No, it's not the case here. But we just don't like the way it looks in the middle. But everything else looks awesome. So looking forward to the new look.
I would like to second, you know, I'm not looking for a complete redesign, but perhaps just looking at your color choices and the material that you've chosen and see if there's a slightly different look to it without major redesign. You know, a couple of pictures here and over there, they look slightly different. But I do like this project. I think there's a lot of interesting new things. You know, I love putting, you know, the green roofs with some of the greenness of it up high rather than all just down low. So I don't even know that the change needs to be all that drastic, quite frankly. But judging by your previous work, I'm sure that something can come that will be happy for the owners and everybody. I have confidence in you.
So, Counsel, we can call you back up too. Thank you. We don't have to make you sit down there. But you can leave that if you want. It's kind of nice to look at as we're thinking about this.
I would like to make a comment on the fence if this is an appropriate time.
Oh, yes, please. Go ahead.
So, you know, I want to stay here. I mean, we support a fence on the north property line. And frankly, I think the property line is the place for the fence. I think you look at the long-term feasibility of putting a road through there, there's a bunch of assumptions that need to evolve that into place in who knows, two, three decades, who knows? You know, I also look at the setbacks that the city has. And if, if the gentleman that owns the property to the north worked to redevelop that, there'd be an offset for his future development. And maybe that fence stays there, right? I am opposed to it being tried to put it behind our curb. We've looked at that. We've looked at circulation. We've looked at traffic. It's incredibly difficult. I think we would have snow removal issues. And then most importantly, I don't think that's the environment we want for residents is to have this, you know, green space back here that's for, you know, playing catch or doing something. And then you, you hit this fence before you get to it. So we would support a fence on the north property line. And we've started with that originally. Julie, spot on. We've had these discussions. I'm just saying, from our point of view, one, right against our curb defeats the entire purpose of what we're trying to deliver to this community with a vibrant living area. And for us, it makes more sense to be right on the property line. One, I think it's the, an easier neighbor decision to have it on the property line. And then two, I just think the reality of the hypothetical of having to move that, that fence is, is higher unless it's on the property line. I truly think it's on the property line. So that, that would be our gene of counsel. And the mayor tonight would be if, if we agree and if you guys provide guidance for a fence there, it would be on the property line, not in the middle, not one foot here or there. I just, I just think it's cleaner, frankly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, could you speak quickly to, or not quickly, and don't mean to rush you, could you speak to, if there were no fence, what are the ramifications negatively of that? And to whom?
Mr. Chair members, sorry, Mayor, members of the council. The concern expressed by Birchwood Labs and their representation is the concern of cut through traffic going to those commercial uses farther up on Eden Prairie Road.
Got it.
So as was discussed at the planning commission, there is pedestrian connection along Eden Prairie Road, a designated trail that residents of The Ellie could come out and walk on that trail up to the Starbucks, the Dairy Queen, the Burger King, wherever they want to go up at that intersection. Can we ensure that there won't be anybody looking to take a shortcut? I can't sit here and guarantee that for you today. But the difference, I think, between the east property line, where Birchwood Labs owns a vacant piece of property that has not yet been developed, and the fact that the property line to the north does have a development on there would in and of itself discourage some folks from doing that cut through on a piece of property that's already got development on it.
And I don't like chain link fences. I suppose one could make it in a black chain link fence or something. But is there still an option that would put a fence there, but Mr. Ellis would have it easily removed? You know, not, not a super expensive fence, but a fence that over the next decade, or however, until along that land puts a road in there, that at least could keep people from walking through. And it could be on that north property line. Is that not an alternative? Somebody, Mr. Ellis?
Yeah. If we're talking about on the developer's property, not the outlot that the city will own, I want to make sure that that's what we're really talking about here.
Okay. I'm not sure what we're talking about here. Where's the proponent? When you talk about your north property line, are you talking about budding up to?
It would be on the other side of the outlot.
The other side of the outlot?
Yeah. I mean, we've worked with the city for eight months trying to work through this road situation. And I think we've gotten there and we've provided this, this outlot up there. So yes, it would be on the far north side.
So Mr. Ellis, just again, if it was like a chain link fence that prevented people from walking, that would be easily removed someday. Why not that? Cause it might be a decade away.
Yeah. I just don't know that we've allowed anybody to build a private fence on city property before. That just is not something that we allow.
What about shrubs in a sign that says no trespassing or whatever?
Yeah.
I personally question the need for the fence. I mean, the argument that, that children will use this as a path to go to Dairy Queen when there's already a trail and there are accommodations to get up to Dairy Queen already. I don't know why people would cut through all of these areas to go to Dairy Queen.
Hi, I'm Mike Shelton, Birchwood Laboratories, CEO and President. Julie, there, it is, it is not developed on the north boundary. That's a tree-covered hillside that comes down to the, to the building if you look on the site map. So that is a perfect spot for, we've all had children's, probably, if we've been kids. What do you do? You go to the vacant lot? You go to the, you know, the, the outlot is what we're talking about. So what we want to do is prevent kids coming through. There's a parking lot right behind there. Our, our facility's parking lot is on the other side of those trees. And that is a very nice access. We feel that there's a long fence line to our west boundary for kids to go, kids, anybody to go to the new Burger King, the new Starbucks and the Dairy Queen. Also, the very easement we're talking about heads right down to the, and we wrote this in the comments, the, it's an impoundment of a pond that's down off Fuller Road. And that's a danger to me for kids as a citizen. That, so we want to restrict that traffic.
So you're suggesting the only way to mitigate that would be to have the fence on the, next to the parking lot, or next to the Ellie's?
No, no. I think he's got a good point. On the property line, it'd be great. And I think that would, that would be, that'd be perfect. The, I guess the precedent of never having it built on city property is a question. But I think it'd be a great spot for it. It's going to eliminate that traffic. It's going to also eliminates the kids doing that, but anybody getting around that corner. I live in Eden, we had a child, if you recall the summer, that went in by the swimming pool, drowned in a retaining pond right there. So it's near and dear. I live right near it. And that's just something that could happen. And I don't think that, it'd be really neat to put, just put a fence up and get over it. Fuller Road is, is Fuller Road, we were the first building out there in 1967. We were Fuller Laboratories. That's why it's Fuller Road. And we've been providing jobs for people in this area for that long, 50 some years, 100 people paying taxes. We want a simple fence to protect our property and that's it. And we're not opposed to the design, but it seems to be coming into these, a lot of roadblocks. I don't understand that. So thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mayor, members of the council, it might be helpful if we could pull up the aerial view that was provided in the PowerPoint presentation so that you can get a visual to understand and see what the distance is between that north property line and the Dairy Queen and how pedestrians would have to navigate through that. There's an aerial view, I think. There you go. Oh, but it doesn't go all the way up to the, all the way up to the north. So as you see from that very north red boundary, that is where they're talking about potentially a fence. As you can see, that property then butts up to Birchwood Labs. To the left is the mini storage. North of that is, I believe it is Deli Express or one of the other businesses before you'd even get to the commercial. So as you can see, it would take navigating through quite a few different parking lots and different properties before you'd hit those commercial uses. When the alternative would be coming out the front door of The Ellie, getting on that trail on Eden Prairie Road and heading, following that trail to get to those commercial uses.
So, Mr. Ellis, I understand that, you know, we don't typically in the past put fences on our city property. But why would we not want to consider that if it was a safety issue with children and/or it made this project work better and it would be paid for by the proponent? Why would we not at this point consider a fence and consider it temporary for a decade or whatever? Why would we not want to do that right now?
Well, you know, I can't think of any other development we fenced to keep the kids out. You know, it's just not something that we see in plans. I, I question the legitimacy of this problem we're trying to solve. And you put in a fence, a kid's gonna climb over a fence anyways. But if a fence needs to go in, I would, I think it should be on the, the fence should be on the owner's property. It's their fence. Once you put it on the city's property, it becomes our problem now. If something were to happen, a kid gets hurt on that fence, well, then it's the city who's liable for that. If the fence gets knocked down, the city gets called to go repair the fence. So, and you know, you can argue what the future holds. Will there be a road here someday? Well, I think a lot of people probably argued 30 years ago, you'd never see this development happen on these seven lots. So I wouldn't hold my breath that nothing is ever going to change in this area. I think it will. I think we're seeing a lot of things change in the last two or three years. So if we put that fence on that outlot, then again, that's, if there's a road there someday, then we've got to find a new place to put that fence. And we're dealing with an issue that I think could be resolved. If we truly feel that there's a need for a fence, I think putting it on the developer's property is the appropriate location for that. Now, initially, I would prefer not putting it in the easement, but if the option is put it in the drainage and utility easement or putting it on city property, I'd much prefer being in the drainage and utility easement.
All right. Counsel, are you comfortable sending us back to staff? They've heard our concerns. If they bring back a decision that, no fence whatsoever, if they bring back a decision that it's best to have the developer completely, which I understand from the proponent, it's not the best choice from your, your point of view to put it on their property only, or if there's a compromise, we can move six feet into city easement, whatever. Are you okay if they bring that back?
Sounds good.
Okay. Oh gosh, where'd we get to here? So, yeah, let's see. Had we made, had we gone on down the line? Everyone's made their statements. Okay, Mr. Gettr, did you?
Oh, no, Mayor. I was just gonna say the action starts after close of public hearing. That's all.
We, well, we did close the public hearing.
Yeah. It starts after that.
Starts after. Yeah. Correct. Correct.
Motion.
Are we ready for that? You're ready to vote on this this evening? And then usually we say end council conditions and we may, might want to stipulate just from our memory what those conditions of our, I know it's been in record and staff has been listening. But, so when you get to that point, we'll, which is at the very end, it's on the next page, we'll talk for a moment about what those conditions are. So someone that would make the motion?
I will adopt a resolution.
I will adopt a resolution for a guide plan change from low-density residential and industrial flex tech to medium-high-density residential on 6.4 acres, and adopt a resolution for a planned unit development concept review on 6.4 acres, and approve the first reading of a planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning change from R122 and I2 to RM2.5 on 6.4 acres, and adopt a resolution for a preliminary plat of seven parcels into one lot and one outlot on 6.4 acres. Direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, including...
Well, we talked about looking at some options on color variations and bringing them back to us, including this current plan as an option, and then we talked about the fence possibilities, and what else did anything I missed?
Including color variations, the addition of a fence on the north...
Fence possibilities.
And fence possibilities on the north side, north.
Yeah, sure. Is there a second?
Second, then.
Okay. Any further conversation, discussion? All those in favor of this project say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes unanimously. Thank you. Welcome to Eden Prairie. And to the Lincoln Lane neighbors, we hope you stay in our town. Thank you for contributing all these years so well to the culture of our city. We know so many people that lived on that road over the, since the 50s, you know, including one of our near and dear police officers, I think the Conleys, Joyce, those Ray Holties were raised there, and many others. All right, thank you. We are on to code amendment for neighborhood commercial. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, Mayor, council members, thank you. On the August, August, I'm sorry, October, October 26th meeting, council directed staff to bring forth an amendment that considers removing gas stations as a permitted use in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. So, that's what we have before you tonight. Julie has a few opening comments, brief report prior to public hearing, and any action you might take on the first reading of an ordinance.
Mayor, Members of the Council, I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to share with you. It's very brief, but it does outline, as Mr. Getcho stated, your October 26th meeting, you asked staff to prepare a draft amendment for your consideration that would remove gas stations as a neighborhood commercial use. Staff did prepare that amendment. The amendment specifically states that gas stations and convenience stores would not be a permitted use in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. The city currently has three gas stations in the neighborhood commercial zoning districts, so there is language that includes an exemption to allow those to remain as permitted uses, since they were in effect at the time of a potential code amendment. And the amendment also addresses, in a different section of the code, there are design standards that talk about what gas stations should look like. For instance, talks about canopies being attached, where the canopy should be located, those types of things, and it lists out all of the different commercial zoning districts that those standards apply to. So, staff is proposing that neighborhood commercial be eliminated from that list to provide consistency between multiple sections of the code. The Planning Commission reviewed this amendment at their November 8th meeting and did recommend approval to the city council unanimously. The next couple of slides illustrate where the parcels are that are zoned neighborhood commercial in Eden Prairie. As you can see from the slide, there are 22 parcels that total 42 acres in size throughout the entire city. So, you can see they are scattered pretty evenly distributed throughout the city. This next slide shows all parcels that are zoned commercial within the city, and it breaks down the number of parcels, as well as the number of acres, through all of those commercial zoning districts. So, as you can see, the neighborhood commercial comprises approximately 7% of the total acreage that is zoned commercial in the city. So, you can see where those properties are and compare overall to the five different commercial zoning districts that exist within the city. And then this last slide shows where the 13 gas stations are that are located within the city. So, as you can see, the, at the bottom of the slide, it talks about where the different zoning districts, how many gas stations they have. So, highway commercial, for instance, has five, neighborhood commercial has three, regional service has two, and those that are identified in red, so there are three more towards the top of your screen, those are the three that are zoned neighborhood commercial. So, those are the three that would remain permitted uses if you were to adopt the ordinance that's before you this evening. And that concludes what I've got to share with you, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions?
I have.
Counsel member, Norah.
I have one question, Julie. So, this ordinance change defined in terms of operating time, like 24 hours versus, you know, from 5:00 to only till 8:00 or 10:00?
Mayor, Members of the Council, so right now, the zoning ordinance refers to gasoline/convenience stores in that other section of the ordinance that I was talking about that identifies the different performance standards. Gasoline/convenience stores are not a defined use, and that's something that the Planning Commission, and I'm sure you saw in reading their minutes, talked about as well, and there was some general discussion that if there's gas pumps, it's a gas station. And I would say that is fairly consistent with how staff would interpret and apply those standards.
So, I'm not sure I understood what you just said. So, my question in terms of operating hours.
Oh, operating hours. I'm sorry, the ordinance does not address operating hours for gasoline and convenience stores.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel? I just wanted to make a comment. This counsel has always been concerned about landowner rights. We've always expressed that as development projects have come forward, and I'm going to look at our attorney here, just to verify that I am saying this correctly, but as long as a landowner can fully actualize the value of their property by proposing other permitted uses that we do permit, then I believe it's our attorney's opinion that we would not be placing an undue burden on a landowner by this ordinance. Is that fair, what I just said?
Well, a couple of things, Counsel, here. First of all, what we're talking about here tonight is a, is an ordinance which creates a couple of legal nonconformities. Those existing gas stations will continue to operate, they have the benefit, it runs with the land, it runs to the subsequent owner, they can repair, they can rebuild, they just can't enlarge. So, those property owners are covered, and what you're talking about is a little bit You're talking about existing uses of property by a landowner. There are other permitted uses in the code that somebody can put that land to. So, it's my opinion that it's not a foregone conclusion that there's nothing that they can do anymore.
Because there are open parcels across our city that potentially either are pre-guided or already-guided neighborhood commercial, and we would not be placing an undue burden on them, it's your opinion, because they have enough other permitted uses that would actualize the value of their land. Is that, is that fair?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, any, anything else that you'd like to ask before we open this up? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the counsel on this code amendment for neighborhood commercial? Seeing none, Counsel, would you go ahead and close the public hearing and make the motion?
Move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend City Code Chapter 11 related to neighborhood commercial zoning district gas stations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor. As we've done, it's customary for this counsel to do this at the end of every year, to hold public hearings for our fees before we get to our budget. So, we've got two different public hearings for our fees. Item E is related to all those fees that we have that are in ordinance. So, many of the fees that we have in ordinance are typically related to the Building Code, which are most of the fees that are in here, and the list of those fees, site plan review, Building Code, tree replacement, development agreement, zoning amendments, zoning appeals, zoning applications, engineering fees, all those fees are listed in the packet, and our proposals for those fees in 2022 are also in the packet. So, we ask that you hold a public hearing and then adopt a ordinance approving the fees that you need to approve by ordinance.
Counsel, any questions before, or comments before we open this up to the public? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the counsel on these fees that were enumerated by Mr. Getcho? All right, seeing none, Counsel, would you close the public hearing and make the motion?
Close the public hearing and approve the first and second readings of the ordinance updating the fee schedules for administration of official controls and adopt resolutions approving the summary for publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Oh, yes.
Oh, you heard?
Oh, I did, but did I miss it?
Say it again. Second.
Mr. Freiberg seconded twice. Put that in the minutes there. All right, without any further ado, then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, the other fees that we have are fees by resolution, not by ordinance, and those fees, again, are listed in the packet. So, these would be fees for our park and recreation programs, for example, community center fee memberships, fees for public work services, fees for police and fire services as well, rental fees, fees for rentals of city facilities. So, those are in the packet as well. They're listed, detailed, and laid out, and we ask that you hold a public hearing and then simply pass a resolution to approve those fees that are to be done by resolution.
Mr. Getcho, do you have a ballpark, I didn't see this in the packet, idea figure over what percentage, if any, we went up this year, or did we hold the line?
Yes, Mayor, we looked at all these individually, and there are some areas where our increases are inflationary. I don't think there are any increases in fees that are kind of beyond the 3% inflation area, but there are some where we might look at the market or what other cities are charging to make sure that we're in the ballpark, or to make sure we're covering, you know, what we need for the service. But I would say, for the most part, you would see fees increasing, you know, in the 2% to 3% range.
Okay. And just to let our public know that in our 50-plus million-dollar budget, we gather our funds to do the work of what the city does for all of our residents from taxes, that's a largest share, but it's still not all, and then from fees, and we try to keep that balanced, so the entire burden is not just on our taxpayers. It's also on the user fees, it's really on the people as well that use our services. All right. Counsel, any questions on this fee resolution item? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the counsel on this fee resolution for city services issue? Seeing none, Counsel, would you close the public hearing and make the motion?
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the 2022 fee resolution.
Mr. Freiberg, would you second, please? No, you don't have to.
Second.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion? I'll let Lisa, you next time, don't.
Okay.
It's okay, we'll get to you. And even you, Kathy, we'll let you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, we have, let's see, we're down to sort of, for this, let me just make a comment here. We've done a lot of important things this evening, as our city council and your government does regularly. Not much more important than setting the levy, collecting our tax dollars from our residents, and then going out and spending the money responsibly, appropriately, as our residents wish to have the quality of life that they've given us direction to have. So, there's not much more important than what we're doing in the next item, and we take this very seriously. So, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Yes, we have a finance manager, Tammy Ann Wilson, and I have a presentation we'd like to go through for the proposed budget. So, Tammy will start, and I'll come in near the end.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Members of the Council, for allowing me to present tonight. So, I am here to present the 2022 property tax levy and budget, and the purpose of tonight's meeting is to solicit public input on the city's budget and tax levy, and it's a requirement of state law, and it has to be held after property owners have received their property tax statements, which were mailed out on November 12th. So, every two years, the city prepares a two-year budget, and the 2022 budget is the first year of that two-year budget. During the year, staff has met with council in various workshops and council meetings to discuss both the 2022 and 2023 budget, but tonight, we're bringing forward just the 2022 budget for your approval. And so, we are proposing a $55.6 million budget, which is an increase of 2.5 million or a 4.8% increase. The general fund budget is proposed at 52.6 million, debt levy at 2.5 million, and the capital levy at $400,000. So, just a little overview, our market value has increased from $11.4 billion in 2021 to $11.8 billion, and the adjusted net tax capacity has increased from $120.5 million to $122.8 million. And the city's tax rate in 2022 is 32.32%, and it was 31.43% in 2021. So, for the general fund revenues, we are proposing $39.3 million for taxes. For licenses and permits, we are proposing $4 million, and this line item does include the building and permits, so kind of the fees and ordinances that you just approved earlier. But what we usually do for the two-year budget is for the building and permits fees revenue, we usually increase it 6% in that first year of the two-year budget, and then the second year, we keep it flat. And so, we did do that with this budget, but as you can see, the percent increase was only 4.8%, and that is just because of the various other licenses and permit revenue that we kind of kept flat or increased at a lower amount. And one of the bigger areas is cable, TVs, so that we budgeted it at $791,000, which is the same as 2021. So, for intergovernmental revenue, we are proposing $5.1 million, which is an increase of $3.8 million, and the increases due mainly to the American recovery money that we received. So, in May of 2021, we received approximately $3.7 million, and in May of 2022, we'll receive the other half of approximately $3.7 million. So, that is pretty much the increase for intergovernmental revenue. For charges for services, we are proposing a $5.2 million, which is a decrease of about $1.2 million, and this decrease is due to the impact of the COVID on the community center. And so, we see memberships are still, you know, steadily rebuilding back, but they still are not at that pre-pandemic levels. And so, we anticipate using some of that intergovernmental revenue, that ARPA money that we received, to kind of fill in for the loss in revenues for charges for services. So, the overall budget for the revenue is $54.8 million or an increase of $4.7 million. So, this following slide just kind of gives you the breakdown of the general fund revenue. So, taxes are about 72% of the budget, licenses and permits, 7%, intergovernmental revenue, 9%, charges for services, 10%, and then other revenue at 2%. Charges for services, 10%, and then other revenue at 2%. So for the general fund expenditures, we are proposing a budget of $52.6 million, which is an increase of 2.5 million or 5.1%. So with this budget, we are able to maintain city services from the prior years. It also includes a 3% base wage increase for employees and also includes new positions for a forester, assistant fire chief, and a dispatcher. It also includes some health insurance enhancements, a contract with Hennepin County for a social service outreach employee for the police department, some additional workers' compensation for our insurance. It includes an increase in IT services for the body cameras that we purchased this year. And then increased resources for the yard waste drop-off site programs. And then also an increase in elections due to 2022 being an election year. This following slide just shows a breakdown of the general fund expenditures by department. So park and recreation make up about 27% of the budget. Police, 33%. And then fire and public works make up about 13% each. And then administration, 9%, and community development, 5%. So for the debt, we are proposing a $2.5 million levy. And this amount is set, with this amount, we haven't changed it since 2017. And the debt that are supported by this debt levy are the tax abatement bonds, which are for the community center pool expansion, the Southwest Fire Station, and then some park referendum bonds. So based off of the general fund budget, the capital improvement fund of $400,000 and the debt levy, we are proposing an overall property tax levy of $40.6 million, which is an increase of $1.8 million or 4.7%. So based off of that total property tax levy, this slide shows what the city tax impact would be on the various property types. And so for the median value home for the city, it is valued at $430,400, which saw an average market value increase of about 3.3%. And so for that median value home, just the city portion, they would see a tax of $1,424 or an increase of $82. Apartments saw an average increase in market value of about 4%. And so if we were to look at an apartment valued at $5 million, their city tax portion would be $20,588 or an increase of $1,327. And then commercial did see an average decrease in their market value of about 4.7%. And so if we looked at a commercial property valued at $2 million, their city tax portion would be $7,725 or a $615 decrease.
Tammy, let me add something there. That's a good example that we collect our taxes off the entire tax base. So when one area changes, it squeezes another. Well, you can put that back up. I don't want to see myself. Thank you. Because I want to be looking at that as I'm talking. But and so the fact that commercial went down, it went down not only because of their value decrease, but state sets a formula all the time as well. And we don't have, say, in that, that formula comes to us. And so what these percentage differences, the market's driving it, the formula's driving it. So if commercial went down 7.4, it has to be made up somewhere else. And some years residential takes a hit. And then commercial sees a spike. I just want people to realize that, that some of these variables are outside of our control. We control, of course, our budget. We control what we spend. We control what we choose to raise in taxes. But the formulas underneath that are outside of our control. Yes, Councilmember.
I just want to bring up another point as well is this is the city portion of the taxes. So some of the residents may be thinking, oh, $82, not that bad. But in reality, they will hit with the school portion of the tax and county portion of the tax, right? So those portions, we don't control, right? So we control is only that $82. I just want to clarify for the audience.
Are we around, I forget, about 30% this year of that bill? Or it used to be 25, is that still so or?
27%. Mayor, turn the slide that Tammy has is going to show you the total tax.
Sorry, we're jumping the gun on you there. All right, thank you. Keep going, you're doing great.
All right, so then if we look at the total property tax, which would include the city, the state, the county, and the school district, and then other taxing districts, a median value home would see an overall tax of $5,292 or an increase of $199. And then apartments would see an overall tax of $74,198 or an increase of $3,264. And then commercial valued at $2 million would see an overall tax of $63,029 or a decrease of $3,220.
So out of that $199, we are responsible for $88, right? That's just, $82, I'm sorry, thank you.
And so then if you looked at, so now this is going back or looking at the overall tax again on a median value home, you can see how Hennepin County receives 31% of that $5,292. The city receives 27%. In the school district, 34%. And then other taxing districts, 8%.
And just comment again to our residents. Sometimes the newspaper will run a listing of all the different municipalities around us. And sometimes they'll show an average tax increase relative to all the other cities. And we might be a little bit higher. But our median price house is higher than many of these other cities, thus driving that tax. So to be apples to apples, you would take our $430,400 house and plop it down in Edina, West, or not just West Bloomington, but West Bloomington, prestigious West Bloomington, as my wife would say, Bloomington, and then Minnetonka. And at that point, we fare very well. I mean, there are some of those areas that we might have a little bit higher tax. But on an apples to apples, Eden Prairie does really well. But again, you might read in a paper, it looks a little bit different because our median price house is higher than many other places.
Correct. And later on in the presentation.
Am I jumping the gun again?
Going through that.
Sorry.
All right, and then if you looked at a commercial property valued at $2 million, that's overall $63,029 tax would be divided up with 14% going to the county, 12% to the city, 22% to the state, 15% to the school, 33% fiscal disparities, and then 4% to other taxing districts. Go back to that median value home, just for the city portion of $1,424. If you were to take that and divide it by 12 months, on a monthly basis, they would be paying $118.67. And then if you would further break it down into the general fund, it would be $112.37. And then $6.30 to the debt and capital fund. And then if you broke it down even further, just on that general fund portion of it, and you broke it into the different departments of that $112.37, police would receive about $37, park and rec, $30, fire and public works would each receive $14, administration, $10, and community development, $5.
That's a great slide. And it also shows the array of the quality of life services that we provide for people living in Eden Prairie. And hopefully that they, at least all of us on the council, I think we get feedback that, in our surveys, we get feedback that people like the quality of life here and they appreciate what they get, you know, the value for their tax dollars. I think this is a wonderful slide to show that. The problem maybe sometimes is that very much more expensive homes pay more for the identical services as maybe less expensive homes. But that's true across the state of Minnesota and it's probably true across the country. It just goes with that territory. But yeah, go ahead.
All right. Well, now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Yes, Mayor, you kind of teased the topic here because I want to kind of take a step back. And Tammy did an excellent job of kind of taking you through all the detailed numbers. And I just want to talk about the process and the plan and our strategic operations. So this process, the budget we put together, we put together a '22 and '23 budget, so it's a two-year budget. What you're approving tonight is just the '22 budget. We'll be here again in a year with some tweaks. But for efficiency purposes, we operate by putting together a two-year budget. Our work started earlier this year, and it did start, Mayor, with that quality of life survey. We begin our budgeting process by doing that statistically significant valid survey of asking our residents questions related to all of our services, our community characteristics, our city services, and how we fare. And we actually build our budget a little bit around that. We also do quite a bit of planning with you, the city council. We do quite a bit of discussion on our prior year. So, you know, for some reason, I would say that in May of this year, we were working on three years at once. We were reviewing 2020. We were in the midst of '21 and we were planning for '22 and '23. We've had several budget workshops and budget discussions. You set a preliminary levy in September. You discussed all of your enterprise funds in November. And here we are in December for that final budget adoption. So it's been, there's been activities pretty much every month of this year related to the budget. Just look back on that survey really quickly. Mayor, you mentioned this, that when we built the budget, the key was our residents really feel that the quality of life in Eden Prairie is very high. And we rank very competitively, not only in the state of Minnesota, but nationally. We rank very well amongst peer suburban cities of similar size throughout the country in terms of a great place to live, but also providing the bread and butter services that we do. We are considered a very safe city. And our residents want us to keep investing in public safety. Public transportation and the upcoming light rail are seen as issues in the near future. And our community parks, recreation, natural environment is nationally renowned. So we do invest quite a bit of that. And our residents did say this past year they are seeking out and using the information sources we provide. So we put six of our main goals into this budget. And I'm just going to briefly touch on, and Tammy did this already, just mention a couple of the major projects in those areas. So in the area of community well-being and safety, we have put some investment into public safety. We are adding in this two-year budget more police officers, a social worker, a dispatcher, another fire chief. So we're bolstering our public safety. We are also focused on providing a high-quality, efficient operation. So you heard downstairs a little bit about how we're kind of a 24/7 city and you'll be able to get any permit, any plan review electronically. There are many, many things you can do digitally. And we use quite a bit of technology to manage our city operations as well as focusing on our employee base. We're a service organization. The majority of our budget, our salaries and benefits for employees, and the employees deliver the frontline services. So we take a lot of pride in investing in our employees. Preserved and beautiful environment is a major goal as well. So we're adding to our forestry program. We're adding a position in forestry. And obviously, we've done a lot with placemaking in our community and beautification and work on our, throughout 36 square miles of the city. Sense of community is another goal in Eden Prairie. And just two things I would mention. As we're coming out of COVID, we're noticing that events and activities have been something people have been striving for. We've seen record numbers at city events that we've had outside. And I think that'll continue. So we wanted to provide those events. And probably the biggest update maybe in our sense of community is how we're working on our race equity plan. That'll be a big part of the upcoming budget. In terms of innovative and sustainable practices, we are known as a sustainable city. We are a leader in sustainability, whether it's in our fleet electrification, water usage, pollinators, or other areas where we try to reduce, reuse, and recycle. We're doing quite a bit in the area of sustainability. And finally, economic vitality. We've seen a growth in our tax base. We approved at the last council meeting another bond issuance where we were reaffirmed, the highest bond rating that you could have in the country. Tammy mentioned that for a decade now, we've been adding very little, if any, debt. So we have some of the lowest debt. And we've been able to build up our capital improvement program and focus on business development retention. And so there's so much more to the budget. And Tammy mentioned some of this with our work with the trail system and the park system, the elections that are coming up. When you have an even-year election, you have almost a six-figure or more bump in your even-year budget because of that. I mentioned the work in public safety, our climate action plan, our fire department, our emergency management plan. So we are looking at a budget in '22 of 4.8% and a levy at 4.7%. That is a little bit higher than what we've had historically. We've had some budgets over the last decade up until now that are in the, anywhere from the 1% to 2% to 3% range. So we are looking at an increase for '22 that's a bit more than normal. But again, we're seeing that growth in the tax base. I think, Mayor, you mentioned earlier, kind of what's that value proposition? What you get, what you pay for? I don't want to go back to the slide that Tammy had earlier, but I do want to mention that because of the decrease or the flat, I wouldn't call it a decrease, but just the flat growth or no growth in commercial property, and that's throughout the metro area, and the robust growth in residential property, there is a little bit of a shift going on. So you did see that we don't typically have, even if it's at $82, you mentioned, Councilmember Norrion, that 6% higher that $82 is, but the commercial number is lower. We've had some numbers that have been lower in commercial, but we are seeing a little more of a shift. That's a pretty significant drop for commercial property. But as the mayor said, we don't control that. We control what we collect. We can't control that shift. However, when you look at 20 cities of similar size and you look at the tax that they're paying in this current year, we're still in that bottom third. And there really are two or three cities there where we're very close. And our property tax rate, our city rate, is proposed to go up only 2.8%. So if the value of your home stayed the same, your tax would only go up 2.8%. But because the value of the average home is going up 3.3%, adding those two together, you get to that $82 or that 6.1%. And it depends on your property. So if you did, in addition to your property, or you're in a neighborhood that's seen even greater growth, we're seeing some double-digit increases in residential value. And the increase in tax is going to be reflected in that. So in terms of comparable levies, we don't set our levy based on what other cities would do. But this is a snapshot of what some of those similar cities are proposing this month. So we feel that we're very much in line. We're not at the bottom. We're not at the top. We're probably, you know, toward the middle back end of some of the proposed levies that are in similar-sized cities. And then lastly, I just want to say a word about fiscal disparities. It's my second last slide here. We are part of a metro-wide program. We are part of a metro-wide program where all commercial property has to put a portion of their value into a metro-wide pool. And then the property tax gets redistributed back out and all those businesses in the metro pay a similar tax rate. Because Eden Prairie has seen a positive growth in commercial property over the last couple decades, of all the cities in the metro, we are the number four contributor, or what I like to say is loser, in the program. There's no other program like this in the country. And the concept was always, hopefully, cities would not attempt to lure businesses from other cities into their cities for tax breaks or jobs. So the idea would be if you somewhat flattened the tax, commercial tax rate across the metro, there might be less competition for luring, luring businesses into other cities. However, again, the result of that is that Eden Prairie is the number four contributor into the program. And it does affect a resident's property taxes. So if that program did not exist, and I like to share this every year, on a $430,000 home, that's the median valued home this year, that's up about 5%, as I said earlier, 4% from last year, the tax would be about 7.5% less on that house if we didn't have a fiscal disparities program. Again, that's something that the state controls. It's something that all cities participate in, but it affects our taxpayers. So with that, Mayor, you, you can certainly hold a public hearing. And Tammy and I can answer any questions that you or anyone who would testify has.
I just had one clarifying question. When you were back on Slide 19, talking about the survey, you said public transportation, light rail are seen as issues. And I want you to clarify, is that like a problem or like a concern that we don't have enough public transportation?
So I think our survey, if you remember, had a couple different angles. Many people are very excited about seeing light rail come into the community. So there are a lot of open-ended answers that said light rail is going to be inability to move around and, and add jobs and move people around quicker. But that, and that we need more transportation and that will be helpful in that regard. And that there were a few that, that had some concerns that our, our community could be a little bit different when light rail comes. So we definitely want to be on top of and ahead of any concerns that that may bring. And as you know, Mayor, that's a goal of the City Council, to prepare for that opening day. We don't know when opening day is. Is it '24, is it 2024, '25, '26? But we're spending a lot of time preparing for that.
Okay. And then one other question is that we've received the $3 something million from the Rescue Act in 2021. And we'll, we'll get it again in '22. Are we concerned about getting so used to it that it's, it's a problem in 2023? And will that result in a larger tax increase in '23? As we got kind of, I know some of the Rescue Act money is just making up for what we lost, like fees from the community center. But is there money that we are getting used to that then we would need to replace somehow in 2023?
That's a great question because we've actually already prepared our '23 budget. And, and know that the plan with that money is one-time revenue is used for one-time expenses or loss of one-time revenue. So we are not relying on it. And I think, in fact, I don't, Tammy might have those numbers. I think we have a budget and tax levy that is actually proposed to be lower than what we're proposing in 2023.
Okay. Thank you. That's a good clarification. And then one final comment. Tax rate's kind of a difficult concept for, for people to understand, but it's the rate per, what, $1,000 of value? And then you set that and then that's how taxes flow out of that. So in a healthy community, you want a declining tax rate generally. And so what people often ask, we're building all this building, all these new houses are coming in. Why aren't our taxes going down? And in essence, the tax rate going down proves that they do. We're, we, we need more money because, you know, we're growing with police department, fire department, parks and recs. But, but if the tax rate's coming down, it's a healthy community. We did, over the COVID years, go up slightly, like incrementally, some hundredths of a point, basis point. But if you look at the tax rate back in '18, we are lower in '22 than we were in '18. And I think, again, that's significant that we're doing, responsibly spending, raising money and spending. And our, and we're spreading it among a larger, growing tax base, which is shown evidenced by the tax rate coming down. So. All right. Before we open it up to the audience, is there anyone on the council wants to ask any clarifying questions? Or should we start the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on our, trying to read it here, certifying the 2022 property tax levy? Please come forward. State your name and your address.
Steven Wagner. I live at 9325 Wilderness Cove. Thank you for the explanation. You may want to, one question for you, Ron. Are you going to paint your fence next week when you get home? It's white.
Oh, that's just hilarious. Thank you so much. Probably not, it's cold. But next summer, you can help me if you'd like.
I can understand why the, I've always been supportive of the school levies. And since you're no longer working with the schools, I, I'm curious why the price went up. But 11.75 is my tax increase from the city of Eden Prairie on my statement that's been issued. You went through the explanation. I understand. I'm speaking with people in the assessor's office as far as what that impact is. But I think there's confusion when a statement like this comes out and I see an increase of roughly over $600 to my taxes. My property on my home has gone up 7.2%. So I'm not certain. I wanted, came here tonight to get an understanding of, because when I hear, well, the percentage is 4.8, when I look at my tax statement, that's not what I'm seeing. So I don't know if my question should be related to the assessing department as far as the value of the home that I'm in right now. I've been through this process before, Ron, as you know. When I listened to conversations on traffic on Eden Prairie Road and acquisition of properties in my time, when I gave up my property, it wasn't a question of what color it was. It was that, "Mendat says you're out of here or we're going into eminent domain." But I think there's needs to be some clarification on this. And I'd like to understand it better. The county says 9.2. You're at the same rate as the county, even higher.
Yeah. So our, yeah, our city rate is lower than the county. But our assessor is here, Steve. And I think that you're, the increase in your value is quite a bit more than the, the average home. So we could certainly set up an appointment and you could talk.
And that's not till March, you said. Is that correct?
Well, you, you could meet anytime. You could meet earlier.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well.
But March is when next year's value is set for next year's taxes.
I can't challenge last year without going to court. I understand that.
Yeah. But we, we could connect you.
That's what I'm here to talk about right now.
Yeah. But we, we don't have to wait till then.
Steve, does that, just curious. And I appreciate you coming in. And I think you're probably going to represent the entire community tonight. So I want you to be really good at that, doing that.
I've only been coming here for about 40 years, Ron, even before you went into politics.
So what, what I'm curious about is, is do you feel like of that 11%, is the bulk of it explained by the increase in the perceived value or whatever the assessor's value of your home? If that were down to zero, would your increase be, whatever would be considered reasonable based on all the other increases in our budget and our tax levy and?
I didn't do the math on that. I just did the math on a 7.2% increased value of the property.
Right.
And then I took the county's 9.2. And then I took the city's 11.75, which seemed to be a little bit on the steep side, at least as I read the statement.
Sure.
And the schools, you know, hey, we need to support our schools.
And all those numbers are a reflection of your home value in 20, in this assessment related to last year. And so I'm assuming since it's a, we, we set, we, we collect the money from, I don't know what it is, say $12 billion tax bases. We, we collect the money from the $12 billion. And that's, that's apartments and that's commercial and that's residential. Okay. The whole gamut. And so if one of them, like the commercial, goes down by the state formula, so now they're paying less. It squeezed the, I don't know what you, what the good metaphor is. But then we got to get it from over here and then it spreads over into apartments and into residential. And some years residential goes down, you know, and commercial gets hit. So I think you're the perfect storm of several things coming together. The commercial values went down. We have to raise more in, in residential. And your home had a hefty decent increase, whether that's, you have to argue with the assessor if that's a legit increase. And then that.
I'm good at that, Ron.
Yeah. You, you are pretty good. But in a, in a respectful, appropriate way, I might add.
Rick, you want to back me up on that? Okay.
Steve and I are long-term friends here. I, well, I hope we're still. I, I count you as one.
I won't hold this against you, Ron. Okay.
At any rate, so I, I would, I'm glad you came in. And I would be very curious. I'd even love to look over your shoulder just to learn more myself, how that impacts you. And I'm sure your representative, I'm going to make this up, but let's just say 10% of the people of Eden Prairie were in your position where their homes went up significantly. At the same time, commercial went down, residential went up. And, and then I'm sure there are 10%, I'm making those numbers up, 10% of our residents whose values went down maybe or something and their taxes went down. Or they, or they stayed the same and therefore their taxes would go down? If the value did stay zero, your taxes would go down relative to everything else.
They would, they would go up very slightly, Mayor, because the rate goes up very slightly.
So everything moves based on, you know, all these variables. And you got hit with a couple of those. And I'd love to learn more about that. So I really do appreciate you coming in.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Say hi to your lovely wife, Claudia. Okay. Let's see. This is a public hearing still. So is there anyone else in the audience wanting to address the council? Okay, council. Let's close the public hearing. If you want to go ahead and make the motion, do that. And then we can continue any conversation you wish to have.
Move the, move the motion to close.
Well, and there, yeah, there is no public hearing. So go ahead and, it's not written, yeah. Yeah, go ahead and then go ahead and read the rest of the motion.
I'm just going to close the public hearing, right?
Do you want to close? Do the whole thing, I think, unless we close the public hearing and make the motion.
Okay, okay. I didn't realize that. Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep. So move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution certifying the 2022 property tax levy to be $43,102,544.
Fifty-four, that's okay.
A 54, sorry. Approve the 2022 budget of $55,617,390 as reviewed by the council and approve a charitable tax levy budget of $200,000.
Sir, second. You almost had to pay $10 there, back to the city because you were, any other comment, discussion? Yes, please.
Yeah, I have a question. We hear a lot of inflation in terms of material, lack of getting the lack of material, you know, and we can see our own life, right? Even just milk and other stuff, right? So city uses a lot of material. And I was wondering, is that going to impact us in any way for the next year? Is that, is that counted in our current budget? And I have a couple of other comments.
That's, no, that's a great question. You know, we factored that in. Obviously, much of what we put in here started in the summer. And we had, we adjust as the fall goes on. Energy prices, fuel, materials. But no, we, we have a, I think we have a budget that can withstand the pressures of inflation.
Okay. That's, that's good to know. Just a comment, general comment. I think, I think Mayor says, other people say that, you know, when I talk to the residents, number one thing is the quality of life in Eden Prairie. I mean, that, so we, we really, I think, manage our budget really well. And Tammy and your organization and Rick and all the stuff. So, and this has been my third year. And I would say you guys did an awesome job in keeping the tax as low as possible. And also that high level of services. I mean, Robert, this morning, my road was clear pretty early, it's seven o'clock in the morning. And that was good. It's a snow day. Some other cities, they're still trying to plow the snow, right? So it's really good to see that kind of services when they're needed. And then, and lastly, I just want to say, you know, our AAA bond rating, I keep on, you know, so the delicate balance of high service, low taxes, and, and borrowing, ability to borrow if you need to, all that together, it's, it's an awesome job. And proud to be one of the council member here today.
Yeah, I second that. Not only our staff, Tammy and others in the department, excellent job. Thank you so much. But also just to let our residents know that this, as Mr. Getchell showed on a slide, that this has started back in March. This is just not coming to us tonight. This has been a product of our involvement, our input, because we represent the people of Eden Prairie and we bring their ideas and their desires and their wants to the table. And we look at it and we see how we can direct our staff to deliver. And then staff does such a phenomenal job of leading us through this. So, Mr. Getchell, great job. But again, this is the culmination of a long process tonight. And we've seen these numbers and we've looked at the budget and we've studied that. So. Anybody else, any other council members wishing to speak this evening? So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Five-zero passes. Okay, we have one more, I think fairly perfunctory public hearing here, vacation of easements. Mr. Getchell.
Yes, Mayor, very much a minor housekeeping item. The developer of Castle Ridge Third Edition requests that we vacate some drainage and utility easements to facilitate the plat for the flying cloud commons development that you approved. So we need to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution.
All right.